Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Okay, welcome everybody on YouTube and those in the audience. Today is Monday, July 8th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. At this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda. If there's no additions or corrections, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make motion to approve the agenda for July 8th.
I'll second.
Move the second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Rita, come on up. Our next agenda item is an action item, these are claims, border order claims. I didn't see any junior college.
Nope, not until August.
And I only had one question, and that was on the James Whitmore mitigation investigation for 4260. What was that?
Mount case.
Well, that's, is that under public defense?
It is. It's under the investigations. It's under the public defense budget, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, that's all I, any more questions?
I would have bet had would be for the Assessor. Each one of their bills were a different amount?
Yeah, it depends on how many days they are invoicing.
Because the number of days.
Yeah.
Oh, that makes sense.
And then also, we put a bunch of our electors through training?
They had to come in for training on the.
Commissioner Mopin, and unfortunately, we did not catch that we did not pay them for that training, which we needed to pay them for that training. So, we are, I guess, back paying that, that training that they attended.
Okay, and it was depending on their mileage, that must, that training must have been here?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then the one thing, and I think I know the answer, but Silver Star Telephone Company, $150.75.
Yeah, it says.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's just, it used to be CTC, CTC sold to them, so.
That's why I didn't recognize the name.
Got it. Okay, any more questions or comments?
I'm good.
Entertain a motion to approve the claims and border order claims.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the claims, the border order claims.
Second. Move the second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Doug, I saw we got the bill for the Long Valley Preservation. Have they gotten on the agenda at all for asking for this next year?
They haven't. The letter that we received from them, Commissioner, is, I don't know if they're requesting this year's payment as well as requesting for the commissioner.
I think they're requesting for next year's budget.
That's what I thought, so it didn't look like.
No, so I did talk with them, and I asked them to send an invoice, and then we got that letter.
Yeah.
And so, I, I think they're asking for the current $5,000 that we have for them. And then, I'd asked that they come in and do a presentation, but it almost looked like in that letter, that was kind of their request for next year too.
True.
So, do we need a different type of invoice?
We, we can pay it based on that letter that we had received.
The conversation that I had with them was, you know, send it, send an invoice requesting that. So, it sounds like that was the request.
Mm-hmm.
But then also, they were explaining their remodel, and she did say, we can use anything we can get right now to finish that remodel. And I think the support of our historical museum is important, so. Go ahead and turn your budget for another $5,000.
Okay, we're going to keep right on going. Our next agenda item is an action item. I guess we need Cindy, oh, there she is, come on up. This is a presentation of a plan to cure the audio failure that occurred on July 1st at 11:30 a.m. to be able to provide a transcribable record of the deliberation decision. And we went, what, another, what do we have, about 20 minutes that we didn't capture?
About 20, 25, right there.
You have the, you don't even have the audio?
No.
So, will we be able to hear right up? Do we have to start where it stopped and go on?
Well, my plan was to kind of look at the minutes and recall, you know, how you're progressing through, and then you can start and redo the end of it. And I've got the sheet that I had listed all of my items on, so I think I can pretty much go in.
She was all the 20 minutes.
Right. True. Yes, I think Sherri can recreate that.
And I got one too.
And then come back and redo the motion. The motion was captured.
Well, you did get the motion?
You did get the motion.
Not, not, not audio. It was in a written format. Remember, she read it back to you? And she did capture that. So, this for the record, this is for the record, so that if this ever went to district court, judge, or whomever's making the decision, we'll be able to figure out what we were doing. So, on July 1st, the Board of County Commissioners removed PUD 2302 McGregor Townsite from the table and began deliberations and then made a decision. At approximately 11:30 a.m., the audio recording device fell during the deliberation. The clerk was unaware that the audio had quit working. There was approximately half an hour that was not recorded on the Valley County YouTube channel, which is the only recording device. The Board also made a decision after deliberation that was not recorded on audio. And I listed the Idaho Code 676536 that tells you that you have to have that transcribable record. So, to cure this, here's what I'm proposing. Upon completion of the draft development agreement by the applicant and transmitted to me, the planning and zoning, I'll get it scheduled with the county clerk, a time period to go through the following steps. We'll have a staff presentation of the summary of your previous deliberations to point out where the audio quit, quit working, staff presentation of what was captured in the written materials, and the documented motion. The Board will repeat their deliberations from that point and make another motion for the record, and then the Board will negotiate the development agreement with the developer. And then, I had recommended there be no notice of the meeting other than what's placed on the agenda, but I ran that past Heath Clark, and he would like to see at least the notice in a newspaper to the neighbors, err on the side of caution, and just to let people know.
It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, but we'll, we'll let them know that the audio fell, and this is what we're doing at the time that we set that meeting up.
Okay.
Okay? And then, at a later date, after we go through, you know, that, that repeat, and we go through the development agreement, then we're going to come back at a date after that and approve the facts and conclusions based upon the decisions made in that meeting. Cindy, that doesn't violate any of the time restraints that we have on these? So, that'll be presented to the Board for approval after deliberation and decision, that's future date, and then the motion for reconsideration timeline will start upon approval of the facts and conclusions.
So, could someone ask for reconsideration?
Not at this time, because we.
That's passed.
No, no, that starts when you make your final decision, which is approval of your facts and conclusions. That's how we have been doing that.
I guess the only thing I could add to that, Cindy, is I think maybe we ought to consider getting you a separate recording device that you have during these hearings, some kind of audio recording that you can do as well, so we have a backup plan, because we didn't even know this thing went off.
I know, I know. The only thing I can say to that is I've been here five years, it's never happened before. I mean, the chance, I mean, it's such a low probability.
Yeah, but it's a small investment for, for her. I think you used to have a recording device.
I've got a little handheld thing that the police use, but it doesn't pick up. Yeah, I don't think, to be able to, to actually get a transcribable record, so if it's sitting down there on top of the counter, you know, you're not going to hear Neil or people in the audience, so I don't know how we do it, hear me research it, but I suspect it's not going to be as inexpensive as we think. Right, it would have to be, you know, a court recorder. That's what we used to have, it would have to be a dual system.
Yeah.
If you're going to do that.
Redundant.
Even a court recorder, I mean, they don't have to have mics. Exactly.
Well, if you need to talk to Jeremy or whoever, we can, but I still think it makes sense to have a backup plan in case this fails again, because I don't know if you guys knew, but this weekend, the internet was down, and it was zippy early, early Saturday morning, I think, and finally came on about 6:30 that morning, but it's kind of unreliable, so we need to figure out a way to make sure we don't have this happen again, I think.
I will send a request to IT. And have him explore that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate Cindy kind of taking this on, but truly, it's a responsibility of the clerk's office.
Right.
So, we will coordinate with Jeremy, with the IT director. We can make some presentations to the commissioners. There is software available that we can look at. It is, as Commissioner Mopin indicated, it's unfortunate, and it doesn't happen that often, but I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman, there does need to be some sort of backup plan developed in order to prevent this from happening in the future, but I do think we just need to take the recommendations of the IT department to determine what the most logical software or handheld or what, what that is. We don't know, yeah, whatever he recommends.
Okay, Cindy, this is an action item, so do we need to make a motion to do this?
Follow the plan that's presented.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make that motion, do, follow, excuse me, the plan that Cindy has outlined to kind of redo the audio failure that occurred on July 1st. Second, a motion, second in all favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. So, you just have this on another agenda?
Yes, as soon as I get that development agreement, then we'll work to get it set. And, you know, we'll do a minimum of like 10 days' notice to neighbors, just to let them know what's going on.
For this few weeks down the road, yeah.
Website.
Okay.
So, there's some work to do before we do that, so that we just have to have the one meeting with the facts and conclusions later, instead of three.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is not for another 15 minutes, so we're going to, I guess, go mute, and we'll see everyone back here at 9:30.
Welcome back, everybody. We're at our 10:30 agenda. These are all department head reports. And the first one up is Annette from Building Department, and she's unable to attend today. She's out inspecting stuff, so we're gonna go next to DeeDee. Come on up.
Morning.
Morning.
DeeDee?
Last week, I showed you guys one of the uniforms that we got, but I had to show you this one. So this is the one that they'll use in the field.
Oh, nice.
Information.
So they're easily identifiable. We had had a special project planned on the 5th of July. And after talking with law enforcement about they were only dealing with the highest level of crises, crises constantly, I got to make my first, you know, big director decision. And after, you know, contacting law enforcement and getting all their information, it was probably not best served for one of my officers to go out in the middle of all that. Because our jurisdiction lies with our clients, and I didn't want there to be a misunderstanding that we're out there to help with crowd control and get ourselves into some kind of situation that is outside our boundaries. So we postponed that special little event that we're gonna do for another time.
Do you deal with truancy, kids not going to school?
Like a truancy officer?
Yeah.
I, um...
Or is that serfs?
I would love to, but, uh, no, that's, um, when I first moved here, we talked with all the, um, schools to see if they would want something like that. Now, I can't get jurisdiction. I don't have jurisdiction to go to a house, or any juvenile probation officer has jurisdiction to go to a house, knock on the door and say, "Get your kid to school." But I can accompany the school to go to that house and to do that, and offer education about truancy, the statutes that are out there, stuff like that. We also talked, especially when Judge Berice was here, about attendance courts. It's a diversionary court. Because most of our attendance issues really stem from those younger kids, not necessarily the older. They haven't, the older kids at 16, um, they don't have to attend, so it's usually that much younger. And then an attendance court is more of a, uh, it's just where there's a judge, volunteer attorneys to assist families through that process. And then the judge can maybe work with, or there could be a, someone, such as someone from our office, that could work with a behavioral contract and resources to get that family through. Now, we're using our MDT, our Community Multiple Disciplinary Team, for a lot of that. Because we're all at the same table. There's no judge, but prosecution, child protection, stuff like that, are all at the same table to discuss those cases. Because they're usually very dynamic. When you don't have five, six, seven, eight, nine-year-olds going to school consistently, there's usually something more that needs to be addressed. It's not just a, "Mom, I'm refusing to go to school."
It's a family thing, yeah.
So DeeDee, do you know the schools, they used to get paid by the number of days that it gives in school? Is that all gone away?
No, 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 it's still there. All those are still, because that's the statute, I think.
Used to be you could miss nine days or less.
Correct. They have to be in the classroom, in the chair 90% of the time to receive your credit and get time for being in school.
And for the school to receive that funding.
Yeah, I don't know about that part, but yeah, I just know they have to be in their desks that much to receive credits or be able to move forward. And there's lots of things that schools do to work within that without overstepping.
You know, it used to be 170 days, something like that.
Yeah, I'm always open to more partnerships like that, because I, if we can get in and get kids into school consistently at an earlier level, it just helps everything. It helps their retention. It helps their education, you know?
Absolutely.
And, yeah, social, everything, so. So just some quick updates. Miscreant probation's at 98 cases. Unsupervised is at 178 cases. Juveniles at 21 cases. This is the first week I get to hopefully start just focusing more 70% on director, 80% on director stuff, and less on juvenile. I have maybe eight or nine diversion cases. I'll finish moving over these next, this next week or so. I'll be on vacation next week, but then after that, Nikki will have all the cases, and I can just focus on the piles that are on my desk of little projects and stuff. So I'm really excited about that. Just for giggles, we had 108 drug tests last month, a pretty low amount of positives. Cannabinoids still being the most. Amphetamine is second, alcohol third, and no fentanyl positives last month.
That's good news.
Yeah, so that's just our little update so far. And I think I'm gonna check in with the courts today, see what our in-custodies look like, and see if they want me to stick around. I know we have like four on Friday. They were talking about either two or three only today, but I can stick around and do it. If there's any pre-trials or something like that, I can set all those up while we're here. And I'm back at 11:30, I think. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, Allison, are you here for 4H?
I am.
extension?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to see if I could clarify a couple of... I reviewed some of the statements that were made up the last commissioners meeting, and I wanted to say a few things to the effect that we don't have camping over by Picard's area, and that was rodeo. My 4H families have never camped in that area.
Oh, okay.
And I just wanted to clarify that, that they go out of their way to work really hard and put a lot of time and energy and money into helping those fairgrounds, but... And then if I need to speak to the budget, I'm happy to be here when Fair Board does their budget. And I don't know that it's known necessarily that I recruit 17 different judges for what we do, three for presentations, five to six for record books. They get paid on a scale of their expertise, whether it's horse judges or livestock judges. Each, I have nine judges that work at least two days for over six hours. Definitely my livestock judges do eight hours in the horse judging. Just a little bit of like, I don't know if everyone knows that, you know what I mean? And I don't know if...
And they're all mostly in-state people?
Yes. And, and they, like, so their credentials are like meat science and ag degree and judging experience. And, you know, we want that criteria there, because of how hard everyone's worked and all the hours put into all of it year-round.
Is that what, is that what you set out, you're local?
Well, we'll bring in like, so the meat science expert from U of I that'll come down, that's lives up there, you know, not working maybe in the summer, but still lives up in Moscow. Come down, or, or, uh, we can get somebody, I mean, if we can promote better education, because we have a specialty judge to come in, but I don't change the prices because of that. And you do want a competitive platform for this, like, you don't, you don't want just anybody that says, "Oh, I'm pretty sure this looks good, and I love that color on that pig. It's so cute," you know? You just really make sure that you know what we're doing, because I don't want to be that person. There's nothing stressful, right, about competition, money, animals, large animals, and...
Honestly, if we don't know the difference, you know, between fair and rodeo right now, the public doesn't. I mean, that's what I think, you know? The fair and rodeo is one event in most people's minds.
Right.
And so that's why it's kind of, you know, it's...
Kind of mashed together in this concept.
It is. And so, you know, I know after being on the board, that it is separated, but in most people's minds, it is one event, you know, one entity.
Gotcha, yeah, yeah. So I just, more I can keep kind of bringing up anything that helps to have clarity on it. You know, that there's over 80 animals down there with these projects.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and I don't, yeah, it doesn't kind of come across with that, what's going on. And the doors fell off the other day on the barn, side of the barn, and, you know, we're gonna be doing a lot of repairs and a lot of work down there, so just to let you know, that's what we're...
In July.
Yep, and just, yeah, the 4H families and, and the volunteers, the community, just really put so much and care so much, and we're getting a good out for, for that, so that's really great and encouraging. And I want, I wanted you guys to know that I really do get that kind of support and help in our program.
And hopefully, and I guess, you know, we don't always think about it, but we did put so much money into the rodeo grounds. Hopefully, you're going to benefit some, you know, from that.
Yeah.
And then as we move forward, and we invested so much in the road department now, you're definitely gonna see some benefit from that.
Sure, and I realize it's gonna be phases and, you know, but, yeah, I think we, I don't know, we could do some really nice work down there. That could be something that our whole county could really hit up. A huge asset.
When you left last time, we had talked about you, you had some architect that does, you know, fair and rodeo grounds for a living.
Uh-huh.
And your group is gonna discuss with them, or something provides some kind of feedback from them?
Yes, it, they really want to make sure that they've got the right information they need. They don't want to just blindly give us a bid. So they just really want to make sure that they've, you know, put together what kind of help that we'll need. So we have to kind of get a few stakeholders together and maybe a little more insight from you all as well.
Put that as an agenda item?
Yes.
Because we have discussed doing an RFP for this exact type of information.
Okay.
Clearwater Financial would also like to do this work, so we need to get started on it, with some of the funding that we have.
I've got, I received a lot of information from that company, so I've been putting together some packets for you two to kind of look at the work they do, the vision, you know, kind of what we got to do on our end, and, you know, as far as our purpose, our, uh...
Sure.
Yeah.
I don't know how the others feel, but I am, for this large, I, what I'm anticipating is this is gonna be a bid that's gonna be higher than we can just do without doing an RFP.
I don't think we're gonna need that. I think we can. It was, to my knowledge, and from the last discussion we had, we won't need to go over that amount that would require that.
Well, I think it's important that we take that input in. 4H is certainly the bigger part of what kind of facility we want to do down there eventually down the road.
It could be a lot of use, yeah.
You know, the goal is to make this a kind of a multi-use facility.
Absolutely.
So we can maybe make some income off of it for private functions and still have public events and voting and some of the other things that would be required of this. It's gonna take a while, but first, first, we gotta get the road department out of there first, and then look at what's salvageable and what's not, and what they're gonna want to take with them as far as buildings. I know they've talked about taking the existing county shop that's there now and moving it later on. I don't know if that's gonna be part of the deal or not. We gotta discover all that.
Yeah, and kind of a way...
I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit.
Sure.
Because we do that a minute. So what, the vision should be broad, and I agree with you 100%, but some of those buildings may not be a part of the vision anyway. And so I would think if we are gonna set a vision moving forward, that we'd want to know what that looks like, and then either Jeff's buildings have to go, or he can just remove them and be a part of that, but... I don't, I don't know until we actually have that footprint and that vision there. I, I think we should do it simultaneously. I guess that's what I'm saying. Is that we don't need to necessarily have them 100% gone before we start this process. We have to allocate these funds, and Doug, I think we have until the end of next year on the lacta funds to identify where those funds are gonna go. So anything we have left over at this moment in time, we need a process and a plan. So I, I just feel like we should be planning simultaneously and not wait until the road departments.
Right, so that we have a, like, there's been a chance for even the...
Those people just give another eyes on the project that you're talking about.
Yeah, it could, it could look like, you know, how are we gonna generate the best use and income by building, you know, maybe something smaller initially for an event center, a smaller one? Maybe it looks like, I don't know, these are just ideas, and that's just it. That's what it'll be. Can we move that here? Is this an expo event center year-round that can be utilized? And there's, you know, lots of different potential, a horse, so people can stay, or, you know, technically, not even with horses, but just be able to stay at the fairgrounds if there's potential for the space for that and different events and...
And I concur with what Els is saying, is this is a broader vision other than just fair? Because that's a little weak here.
Yes, yeah.
And so if your individuals are only discussing fairgrounds...
Oh, no, no.
...versus an event venue, then that's what we need to kind of dial down on, so we make sure we have the right people at the table to have this conversation.
Absolutely. No, that is definitely a broader vision. Absolutely. Expos, weddings, you know, you name it, yep. Just, and getting a lot of feedback from other fairgrounds too, on how they do that and what they set up to generate money.
And that's what I'm looking forward to, is that, because I feel like this is gonna be kind of a phased development, phased plan. We certainly don't want to go down there, tear down all the red barns and then not have anything for 4H.
Right, right. We can't go ripping stuff out until we have things in place.
Something built first, so lots of planning.
Yep, and that perfect company is doing Grigby Idaho's fairgrounds right now, so, and lots of experience doing fairgrounds. That's kind of the...
You could get us something sooner rather than later, maybe?
Yeah.
Or workshop or something.
I will, let me get through fair. Let me build the fairgrounds.
No.
I, but absolutely. And I, and it might actually be sooner than later, because I have a retired, very helpful, passionate person that's helping me with this project, so I, she's already accumulating some really good information, so we can put together some at least readable's for now.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Melissa, do you have anything to add?
Really, just really quick. Bianvina Dus Community Garden Construction Day went really well. Continuing to work with Creative District, the Food Coalition. And this week, I have 30 professionals from around the state coming to do a horticulture in-service. So those will just be my quick, brief updates. I also sent over an Excel sheet of the different county fairgrounds and some of the structures. I don't know if you found that in email. I think I sent it to the general commissioners. Maybe I sent it just...
Don't think I've seen that.
If you just do that, Melissa.
I'll resend that.
Yeah, if you could resend it, because I didn't get, let's see, my junk or something.
Like last week?
Yeah, yeah, that was like last week.
This came last week. Yeah, we did get that.
Okay, well, I'll resend it specifically to Commissioner Hasbrook.
Thank you.
Yep, and it's just the start of kind of aggregating some of that information.
Was that a deal from U of I that you'd sent?
It's an Excel sheet. When I went to that county chair training, I asked different people from different counties to kind of put any information about their fairgrounds, like if they've had any donations, or if they have year-round facilities, if they have staff to support it. And so just trying to...
Haven't seen that. It was on 6/24. I did get it, Melissa and I forgot, and I haven't looked at it, but...
It's just the beginning, and I think it's really important to look at the population of each county. But it is interesting to see what people are doing at our county population and under, and then how they support that fairground. Anyway, that's all I have. Any questions?
And then also, just to let you guys know, Melissa's helping us on the resource management plan. So we are starting some in-depth conversations about that resource management plan, so I appreciate the support there.
Sure thing.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next one up is Human Resources, Mike.
Morning. Morning. First thing I have for you is an action item, looking for your approval of an engagement letter that we have received from the accounting firm of I. Bailey regarding a payroll audit of our system here. The information there that you should have should spell out exactly the scope of what it is that they are discussing, doing for us, as well as timelines and estimated costs, understanding that obviously until they get in here and see what there is, that could change somewhat. The scope of what it is that they are offering to do for us is basically three main areas. The first one is to go through and check to make sure that the actual processing of going from timesheets to paychecks is being done accurately and that we're not seeing any issues there. The other one being looking at the mechanics of things like payroll taxes and other withholdings and deductions to make sure that those numbers are coming out accurately. And then thirdly, just making sure that the process that we are going through with our payroll here is compliant with all state and federal laws. So anyway, I probably reached out to over a half a dozen different accounting firms looking for any interest in doing this. I. Bailey is one that we have worked with in the past. They are a known element to us and someone that we've trusted in the past. And they're right now at the forefront of where we are with as far as willingness to do this for us. So I've got one other accounting firm that's a couple of weeks behind as far as, yeah, we might be able to help you out, but this is the group right now I would recommend that we go with if we do this.
I read all the stuff on it now. I know they're a good firm, just saw it looking there one time.
So Mike, are they also going to look at to make sure that we have coded correctly those that are exempt and non-exempt?
Absolutely, yeah.
So Mike, I, I think this is great. I think we need to go down this road. My concern is that open-ended, somewhere between 35 and 40, and is there any way we could put into the contract that up to, I'm gonna say 40,000, if they go beyond, they gotta come in and ask for that?
Oh, I think that would be a great recommendation and a great addition to put into here.
These things can grow and grow and grow. Pretty soon, you spend a lot of money.
In fact, I would say, Commissioner, that this, I would interpret it to say, if you're gonna go beyond the upper limit, you gotta let us know, and let us know early enough to not get into this thing and say, "Oh, wow, we're 95% of the way done, but we need another 50,000 to finish it." It's like, no, 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 no. We need you guys to get into this thing early. And that would also be, I imagine that I would be certainly a point of contact for this project to be able to be having regular feedback and regular discussions with them to say, "Do you think you're on track? Do you think you're within your budget?"
Well, my other concern too is that, and they stated it under their contract, that we'll be billed for actual out-of-cost expenses such as travel mileage, lodging, and meals, which is on top of the 35 to 40,000, I'm assuming, because it's in addition to the professional fees. And so there's a lot of kind of gray area in this that I feel like we need to kind of make sure we set some borders around. make sure we set some borders around.
Okay.
As far as they go with this. Other than that, this is a, bottom line, this is a company out, I think it's Michigan or somewhere, but they do have a subsidiary here in Idaho, so that kind of makes us eligible to go ahead and do this.
So do you wanna cap it at 40 or you wanna go there 42.5?
I'm open to that. It says 42.5 on here. Well, hold it back up.
Thirty-five to 42.5.
Yeah.
Yep.
Forty-two five.
We put it at 40. I was kind of in the middle, but.
Let's say 42, 42.5 gives them the, if they know they're gonna go 42.5, they come back to us.
Absolutely.
Doug, do we have this, is this gonna come out of what, general fund?
It would be coming out of general fund reserve when we're built, Mr. Tur.
When we're built, okay.
We do this one out of general fund reserves.
So why don't you make that motion? Put, make that part of your.
Chairman, I would move that we approve and sign the Ida Bailey letter for payroll, our internal audit for up to 42,500.
Second. And if you don't, Mike, can you add to your motion that this will be funded out of general fund reserve?
Be funded out of general fund reserves.
Okay with you? Also a second. Hey, we got a motion in a second to approve this contract for 42,500, be funded out of general fund reserve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and you have a day bringing on up.
Mike, well, they. After they get down, uh, if they see any potential issues, they give us a recommendation of what we should possibly do.
That was one of the things I said, we need you guys to give us the best recommendation to see if we should process that we're doing payroll for right now.
Um, good, good. You know when they're gonna start?
Soon as possible.
They probably won't get it done before budget, will they?
I, they've got it in there that, I told them, if you could have it done in this fiscal year, I'd be awesome. Be appreciative of that, so they've got a, at least they've got a semi-hard deadline of September 30th.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, just to give you a quick recruiting update, we are getting really close to being relatively full staff. We brought on a few new positions within the last couple of weeks. I've been sending out emails on those as they come in. We just filled up our billing department today with our billing technician, a replacement for Gordon, and we've got our grant writer in the pipeline, as we all know. He's on his way here hopefully September 1st, starting then. Beyond that, we've got, we're still, of course, recruiting for a mechanic, but we do have a couple of applicants for that one, and the road department is actually interested in the names that they've got for that. One gentleman over in the Utah area who's desperate to get out of there and to come here, and he has fleet management experience and technical mechanical diesel mechanics experience and whatnot, so anyway, we're hoping to have something positive there. And then Clerk Miller and I are gonna meet with the sheriff here probably within the next week or two to discuss just the overall staffing situation for the sheriff's office. We think we're getting pretty close to being fully staffed in that area, and just want to get together and make sure that we're all on the same page with that, but other than that, we're full up.
What about the, the 911, the?
That's part of the discussion we need to have there. I pulled the recruitment a couple of weeks back at the recommendation of Kelly over there because she had some names she was ready to extend some job offers to, so she said, go ahead and pull the recruitment, I think I'm close, so that will be part of the update that we get with the sheriff's office.
Uh, Mike, another issue that's kind of popped up more this couple of weeks is our code enforcement. We have some issues with that person's real ability to, to look at and issue misdemeanors. The prosecutor's getting a lot of complaints from landowners, and so it's into having to deal with some of these encroachments, and I'm thinking maybe we need to start thinking about moving code enforcement into the sheriff's department, and they'll be post-certified, they're trained on what forms and what violations and how to fill those out, and then that makes it easier for the prosecutor and the billing department to say yea or nay or red flag and all the issues that they, and I'm just wondering if we should all get together here in a week or two, sheriffs and the, and that us, and start talking about maybe bringing more professional stoutness to that office and see if we can't cure some of the issues that prosecutors have been dealing with for, and us too, sometimes as commissioners, with people griping about their neighbors.
Sure, absolutely, we can do that for sure.
Look at a job description, we would need a salary, all that kind of stuff.
Get that together. I can do my end of that in a very short period of time.
And what else I would like to know about that is, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, so I'd like to know what other counties have done on that spectrum.
Absolutely, I can reach out to my counterparts at other counties and say, how do you guys do code enforcement on billing and P and Z issues?
Yep, absolutely. Well, and I've already kind of laid the groundwork with the sheriff, and you know, it's, well, it'd be, it's another person for them, so we'd have to look at their budget and, you know, who funds this position, whether it's sheriff or if it's land and zoning or billing department, or if it's a shared cost, all those issues have to be kind of talked about and worked out, but I think, you know, we've gone professional in a lot of other areas in the county, and I think this is one of the last places we need to stand up somebody with a little more gunpowder behind them, so.
And I, I think that it does need to be a workshop, because Senda then needs to be able to tell us how that impacts her division.
Right.
Because she doesn't only do code enforcement, there's other things, so she's gonna need more help over there, so by moving people around, we may end up having to add an additional person, and we may have to anyway, so.
Yep, but I think, you know, I want everybody's input, make this work, so. Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions for Mike?
Okay.
Hey, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Jeremy.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, with the holidays and everything, there's, there's not much. I, what I sent you about last Monday is all that I know, so I don't know what happened with that, with that recording, so I apologize that it is what it is, but.
I just have to blab all over again.
Yeah.
You gotta listen to it twice.
Geez, I. You should have all your, your numbers written down, you just gotta, you just gotta say them again or whatever.
Well, and I think, after we kind of discussed earlier, Doug has an issue that he can internal record as well through this device, but apparently it wasn't enabled, so I think we need to talk or look at, making sure that we have a backup.
Yeah.
Recording of some of these heavier duty hearings. I'm not saying all of it, of course, the concern is storing all that data.
I think Clerk Miller said that if it's a public hearing or anything, um, I don't know what I'm saying, I'm trying to say that the public cares about, that that usually happens, but.
You just have to have a transcrutable record on certain judicial review stuff, so. Um, so Jeremy, we talked once about the fact that, you know, a lot of this type of stuff takes up all of our bandwidth there, all of our resources, so did we ever look into the cloud? You know, storing all this stuff on the cloud, you said once, it's very expensive.
Storing what?
Well, so if we do all the recordings, say, say Doug recorded all of these, does it take additional storage space? That would be very large.
So, yes, and I mean, anything that makes, this is the first time that, and I know if it happened once, it could happen again, this is the first time that a recording hasn't actually made it to YouTube, but once it's there, it's there. The number of meetings we do and how big video is versus just audio, if we wanted a true backup and we did store every recorded video locally, that would take quite a bit of, not initially, but once you get into, you know, five, 10 years from now, that's, that's it. Unless there's some sort of retention, like after three years we get to leave stuff, I mean, that would be a consideration, but if we had to keep everything forever, that, that would get.
We gotta have this stuff.
A lot for review on Doug's, right? I mean, we could do that.
Well, I think there's gonna come a point where it trips the action that maybe we need to buy storage in the cloud and not use our own space, but to me, I feel like if the YouTube works, we don't need the audio recording for that meeting, and then we would delete that part of it, we wouldn't have to store it, but I don't know legally if we can do that.
Well, I think what I, what I discussed with Clerk Miller was any meeting that we have to have a transcrutable record for, do both, stream it to YouTube and record locally. And then once it's over, as long as, once we know that the YouTube version is good, and we can get rid of the local version after some amount of time or whatever, I mean, that's.
Makes sense to me.
Perfectly reasonable option.
Okay.
Um, other stuff, um, again, pretty slow here, all the stuff for the, for Lake Fork is in, I'm just waiting for facilities to mount the TV mount on the wall. We'll get that finished and going. I'm starting to, and the other thing, I'm starting to get a plan together, and I'm gonna send out an email today or sometime this week to everybody, to all the employees in the county, but I know I mentioned a few months ago that we got approved for a .gov domain. I'm getting a plan together to start transitioning our stuff to that, and the first thing I'm gonna do, because it's the easiest and it's probably the more, most impactful, is everybody's email addresses, so I'm working on a plan to, that transition, I'll communicate that with everybody and make sure everybody knows what's going on before we do that.
And what will be our email tag?
It's valleycountyid.gov. A lot simpler to say, a lot simpler to tell people, so as we get closer, maybe we can.
Sherrymopin@valley.id.gov?
Yeah. No, it would be S, Smopin@valleycountyid.gov. Yeah, when you register for those, there's certain naming conventions that, that they have for certain kinds of entities, and for a local county government, it is usually the county name, the two-digit state, .gov, so. For us, it would be just valleycountyid.gov. And then once we get the plan together, we get closer, we'll, we'll post it on our website, maybe we put something in the paper to tell the public what we're doing, so if they start getting different emails from people, they don't know what's going on and so.
Will there be a transition period where our old ones will go to the new?
Yes, so the way, um, it's gonna work is both email addresses will still work for however long we need them to. So that way, people have time to inform folks and, you know, get new business cards as they, as they need to.
Will it do a reverse notice so that if somebody emails my old one, it'd say, please update your records to this new email address?
Uh, it won't do that, but, now, I, I can look into that. I hadn't thought about that.
That would probably be helpful.
Think so, but I can look and see if maybe a global rule can be set up. I can do that. I'll, I'll put that as part of my plan as I'm working through all the steps to actually make it happen.
We're trying to update all of our contacts, I get contacts, I, it would take a lot to be able to update all my contacts, but if we could just notify them, you know, get your stuff, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll look into that and add it to my plan if it's possible. Um, yeah, on that, that's all, that's all I got for today, unless you have anything else for me?
Yeah, can you come up here and look at this?
On your.
I can't take from Craspin, Adipachry. Can you come look at this real quick?
You're pointing at something, you're pointing at it.
On your budget, I noticed the only budgeted item is the 100,000 for the sheriff's software. Are we doing anything for building? What are we doing on budget? I guess we can talk about that when we get there, this budget coming up.
So next week then? That's, that's just a scare tactic thing that we do, it goes every now and then. A lot of times it'll be copyright.
Provide you with an update of what.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Software. Notice thing, I would just delete it and that.
Not a problem, I just wanted it.
It's not.
I personally wanted that.
Thank you.
I did get the, um, the quote for an enterprise version that we looked at. The next steps in that process was to set up, I'm gonna set up a meeting, Tyler offered to set up a meeting with the community development developers and myself and Senda and Annette to discuss the changes that are coming to the community development, and then based on whether those are gonna come seen enough and if they're gonna be, if they feel that they're gonna be enough to continue with what we have, then cool, if not, then I can add that quote to my budget for final approval, we're not, it was 101,000, so. Quite a bit of money to move from what we have now up to there, and then, so, yeah. But I can, I can put it in just to, I mean, as, worse comes to worse, you guys just, you know, deny it and say we can't do it, so I can just add it now, just so it's there.
Will you go out and see if there's any other software that is not as expensive that would still do that work for them? We've just been talking about this for too long. We need to find a resolution for them if we're in another budget cycle, so I don't, I don't know what that looks like, but I'm supporting my team, I'm supporting my constituents. The sheriff's office is a, in my opinion, it's a want this year, it's not a need for this year, and so we keep pushing money to different programs, and they're, in my opinion, they're getting overlooked, so I think we need to try and find whatever that resolution is, so we know, because we're finalizing the budget.
Okay, I can do that, just so you're aware, we have a few months, but if, I can look at, I mean, I'm sure that, there's plenty of software companies out there that do this kind of, um, kind of thing. If we move to a different solution, that's fine, but the cost might trigger an RFQ, I might have to write up and send out, go through that whole process, so. But I will certainly do that.
Okay. We're just getting to the end of the moment again, and then they'll put off for another year. I'd like to have that conversation before.
Okay.
The final triggers.
Okay, any more questions for Jeremy? Yeah, good. All right, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thanks, Jeremy. Uh, next one up is Senda.
Okay, not much of a report, busy writing staff reports, you know, for the Planning and zoning commission, you have an appeal coming up July 15th, P and Z has work session scheduled July 16th, I'm part of that coalition for the Valley Soil Water Conservation District, and we're doing about one or two meetings a month on that. Um, the big issue that came up at my last coalition meeting was BMPs and implementation of BMPs. We do have code in the land use ordinance concerning BMPs, and BMPs should be used during construction sites and retaining stormwater on your property and not causing it to run off onto your neighbor's property. This general, good neighborhood BMPs, silt fencing, straw waddles, all that stuff. And then in 1997, we adopted this site planning and new construction considerations for water quality, so we do have the tools in place to take care of these issues.
So who's enforcing those tools?
I don't know. I don't go out and do building inspections. I think it's, it's part of a building inspection.
So I did get a response, and I don't think I sent that to you, from Michelle Gronovell on how McCall's handling it.
Mm-hmm.
And there's three people that touch it, and so we need, we need to try and clarify where that process is and who's enforcing these, because it's not acceptable, it's buried into the like period, and we saw some pictures recently of that happening.
I think that's an accumulation over years. I don't think that that's all occurring right now. I think that's his catalog of pictures.
And, and I think that's good feedback, but at the same time, we have to have a process, so we within the county know who's responsible for doing these things. So again, as we budget, we have to make sure the divisions all have. as we budget, we have to make sure the divisions all have the tools they need, making sure that our ordinances are being enforced.
So I I think we, that could be part of our code compliance discussion or code enforcement because I don't know at what point would a code enforcement person go out and issue a a ticket? I'm not sure what we're after there.
Well, I think the issue that I see, Sinda, is we're getting a lot of people that kind of assume it's okay to go do something near waterway or the the lakes. And they probably from, maybe they don't know, maybe they're trying to get away with something, but there's no one from our side of the argument that goes out and says, no, you can't do what you're doing.
I do that.
So, yeah, we had an issue last week. I got a lot of calls on it.
Smith Ferry.
In the Smith Ferry issue. And I'm like, well, who goes down and says, no, you can't do this?
Idaho Department of Lands.
And how are they notified if we hear about it?
Well, they typically call. I get the same calls every year on that particular property.
Cool.
Year after year.
Oh, my goodness.
And I again tell them to call Idaho Department of Lands because it's their land, it's their jurisdiction. If it's doing work actually in the floodplain, a map floodplain, then I'll require a floodplain permit.
Okay. I think the issue is people don't feel like they're, nobody's showing up, nobody's actually doing anything. And that's where we need to talk about with the code enforcement stuff.
Well, I I look forward to that discussion because I'm not sure at what point there's a code enforcement officer. I'm not sure what that is.
We, I, we don't know what this situation is. So is there a code in the county that is surrounding the situation in Smith Ferry?
The floodplain permit, but it's not in a, he's not doing work down in the riverbed or in the floodplain. He was doing stuff on Idaho Department of Lands properties.
So Sinda, on that paper you were just talking about, talking enforcement, who checks water, it's like mill department. I understand them dealing with all the structure and the and the roads and things that go in. As far as berms and watershed and where that goes, do they stop at a certain point and then the drainages and keep water on site? Is that more on your guy's side or it's?
That's, that's what we need to have the discussion about because historically, they've put in silt fencing at building sites, you know, the SWIP plans and all of that. But if, yeah, I mean, if you think planning and zoning needs to do it, then we'll hire somebody to go out and do an inspection of the site before they start building.
Well, I don't know. I think that's-
I don't think that's what I'm talking about though. It is like when the process is finished, any of these subdivisions that we do, and they say, okay, you gotta keep your storm water on site. Um, is the building department capable of having an individual that understands water drainage? Or is that outside their?
That'd be more engineering. An engineer would understand that. But what happens is when they're doing a development, is they have approved site grading storm water management plans, and then they implement those plans. Those those plans are approved by the Valley County engineer. And then they create those, and those should work long term.
So is our engineer going out and inspecting that, make sure it's put in correctly?
No. Um, we're getting something from their engineer certifying that it was done according to the approved plans. Because that's on their stamp, and it's not us guaranteeing taking on that liability.
Okay, I'm following you. Well, and like the issue that we had with the McGregor application, we understood that the neighbors to the west were supposed to maintain that drainages, which they weren't, they were filling it. Who goes after that? Is that your job?
That will be us and and the engineer, now that we have someone that can actually go out and look.
And look.
And I just became aware of it, I think, last year or the year before.
You know, and I think that's with this code enforcement, we're gonna have to set parameters, but we need to make that process quicker, for one thing, quicker reaction. And then the paperwork needed by the prosecutors, it ends up going in front of a judge that all he knows how to do all that stuff and do a lot of that work depending on where the infraction is.
I I would like to have this discussion with our legal counsel because I thought we were doing our reports properly in planning and zoning.
And you may may well be, Sinda, I don't know that.
Doing it according to what he wanted.
But there's some issues that they're dealing with that I don't think are P&amp;Z issues. Maybe building department issues that aren't happening. And so we need to get everybody down to sit down and figure, okay, how do we fix this issue? And if it's a new employee with different abilities, different legal authority, then that's what we gotta do. But, um, and I don't think it's gonna be that terribly difficult to set parameters. And this is who's gonna do this, this is the next step and-
We need, we need to talk about it. But if you're gonna hire a new person, I'm, I mean, for four violations in a year.
Well, that's the other aspect of it. Now, and I think as more people come up, we're gonna see a lot more complaints from neighbors, so to speak.
Yeah, but complaints are different than violations.
Oh, yeah.
For code enforcement. We get complaints all day long.
And it would be great-
I get a complaint because some kid's riding his motorcycle in a field.
Yeah. But it would be great to be able to say, okay, here's our code enforcement guy. You call him and explain it to him or her, and they go out and they actually investigate the complaint. You don't have to do it. Your guy doesn't have to do it. It's a different way of doing the same thing, but with more authority to that office.
Right. So somebody will be learning all of planning and zoning. And so it'll be a planner with a badge.
With a badge.
Type of thing.
That's, I like that.
Let's-
And and then we may not succeed, we may not be able to figure it out. But the system we have now is not really working.
I would like to know, yeah, I would love to have this meeting because I'd like to know where the the issues are.
I'm asking for one hour on an upcoming agenda.
Okay.
To discuss.
A lot of times I hear, you know, there's more and more and more and more, but nobody ever gives me specifics.
Mm-hmm.
It's just-
Yeah. Well, and even our job, sometimes we get those calls in different odd hours about, hey, the kid's riding out of my field, you know, those kind of issues. Well, that's part of living up here. But, um, I think it's just time that we we move up a step as far as our abilities to handle these issues, like we've done in all the other.
And that's why we hired a code compliance person who has been at the job for a couple of months. And right now, he's learning how to do short-term rentals and RVCs and noticing and all of that stuff because it's not just code compliance for this position. There's a whole bunch more to it. I don't know that we could get rid of that position because right now Lori and I are pretty stretched.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't see that happening. Sinda, if anything, it would be more of a sheriff's office person and you guys would handle the complaints. And then if there is a serious violation, you would just forward it to that person. But you're, you would still keep your staff and still keep going. Where you going? Hey, anything else?
Yeah. Uh, there's a water rights training August 21st. I don't know if everybody's aware of it.
Water rights?
Water rights in Idaho.
Oh, who's off?
August 21st.
Who's offering it?
Oh, it's the NBI. Um, the presenters are Dylan Lawrence and Norman Samanko.
Samanko.
Will you, uh, forward that to us?
Well, it's, is it online or is it in person?
It's online.
Good.
It's NBI. This is all I got. I didn't get anything online. I'll look at that and see. So, yeah.
Okay. That's my anniversary. I don't know if I'll be around or not.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next one up is Larry.
What?
Good morning.
What day is it anyway?
Hmm, a good day.
Busy week. My gosh, I I think we had a record. Almost wish ITD would have put some counters out and let us know how many, how many guests we had this last week.
They have them out all the time, so we should be able to find them.
We'll find out. I'll, I'll bet we hit a record this time. I don't think there was a place on Cascade Reservoir that didn't have an awning or something stuck on it. It's pretty impressive.
I read your stuff on the Chevron thing. That's-
Yeah.
That could be a good thing.
Um, that's gonna go on and on. I'm just keep getting continual messages on it. There's a lot of lawsuits lining up.
I'm sure.
So it's gonna be, it just kind of changes responsibilities more than anything else. Uh, pickleball guys, uh, got the, um, epoxy's just about done. Fencing's going up and they purchased $480 worth of parking permits. We're heading in a good direction there. Don't offset any costs.
Parking permits for, what's the parking permits for?
So we charge $5 for parking or $20 a season for parking in all of our parks, including the pickleball courts.
The pickleball courts.
And and we keep, we'll keep those funds separate and always put them back into the maintenance of that facility, whether it be cleaning outhouses or raking something or or getting some, um, dust abatement done. But we'll always keep it and put it back on those places to respect the people that are paying for it. How would you guys like to talk about mog?
I would just love to. And actually, just to let you know, I've asked the Forest Service to come in and discuss this and how it's going to impact us.
It's kind of-
It's supposed to be in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, and I I've had some conversations with a couple of district rangers and kind of ignoring it, to be quite honest with you. Um, so what I've gotten out of it from, from a couple of attorneys and land attorneys and stuff, and what I've read, it really doesn't have any effect on recreation. In fact, there's a direct, uh, comment, and there are six point, four point two that talks about recreation in, um, old growth and that they can go in and remove old growth for maintenance to keep the trails and the and the and everything open. Talks quite a bit about ski facilities and how they're gonna work with them. Um, I think the only thing that's really gonna, that I'm personally a little concerned with is how it's gonna affect logging. Because it could, um, it could go one way, the others, that that's, the whole thing is pretty, it's gonna be up to the district ranger to interpret what this thing says. It's not, this really isn't a policy that's stamped. And so there's a lot of interpretation in it. Um-
And that's the problem.
That's the problem. Exactly. Uh, I I just, you know, hearing from the IRC attorney is it's just, they just don't see how it's gonna affect us in the, in the recreation world. So that's a good thing. And let's face it, old growth in, old growth in Valley County and old growth in the Willamette Valley or up north is two whole different things. I don't think it's old growth that's gonna be our issues. It's gonna be the mature when they, it's defining what mature is.
And keep in mind too, Larry, that there's no sawmill now that'll take a log over 22 inches wide.
So, uh, actually, um, the guys over in, uh, over in Adams County are bringing in a, a bigger-
Oh, are they?
So they can do that, do that stuff.
Two bigger trees?
That's a tamarack? Tamarack.
Okay.
Yeah. Which is, which is good news because we do have a lot of larger logs out there. And right now, we're transporting them quite a distance to get them taken care of.
That's interesting. They, they had that and they got rid of it.
Yeah, that's something. Yeah. Uh, but what it's really done though, the the sad part of it is, is, is they made it the priority and it slowed down the NEPA process. So all the things we've been working on and we've been watching are are slowed down right now. And, um, that, that isn't good. Um, I was surprised to see one of the comments they made, a lot of talk about ski, downhill skiing, and they said the second largest use of the forest is downhill skiing. They didn't say who's the first or the third or anything that, but they put a lot of emphasis on ski resorts, which, of course, with Tamarack's expansion and Brundage's potential expansion, we're concerned about, um, more public lands going to private sector companies and locking cer- certain people out. But we'll keep our our eyes on that. Only real complaints I got over the, this last week, unfortunately, was a Camel Creek boat dock. Um, the docks are falling apart. There's actually four of them up on the bank now that's fallen apart. The parking lot up above has got huge cracks in it with grass growing through it. And it's just, it's not being kept up at all. A lot of garbage around there. I have talked to Chris Bentley in the past about the possibility of the county taking that project, that area over, and I really haven't got any response yet.
Why would we want to do that?
Well, is that-
Is that the one you took me out to that day and showed me that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a nice, could be a really nice.
It could be awesome. It really could be. The reason we should take it over is because we can maintain it just with fees. The Forest Service cannot charge fees down there because of the original grant. But if they, if they exchange the land with us or just turn it over to us, which they do, have the ability to do that, uh, we could charge our standard fees, $5 for parking, $20 per season, or a boat launch fee, and put all that money back into maintaining that facility before we lose it. That's the one thing, as you guys know, and I always talk about it, we got a 30-year-old infrastructure. We've added nothing to it and we've, with the population increase. So we gotta figure ways to make sure everything we have stays viable.
Well, I'm like, I'm thinking about Worm Lake. Worm Lake's docks are terrible.
Horrible.
And just the amount of traffic they're getting now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so maybe we need to call in the Boise, ask Chris to come in and have this discussion with us.
It isn't, uh, for some reason, I was thinking Worm Lake was BOR, but maybe not.
I think so.
Yeah, no, I've, I've, I've got a, I called him this morning because I want to talk to him again about, because I know those guys are really busy right now dealing with prescribed fire and and all that. But I want to make sure that it's on their docket to have that discussion. Because we got, these things, we gotta take care of what we got, that's for darn sure. Because I don't think we're gonna get much else.
I was told Worm Lake, they were redoing all the septic up there right now.
Yeah, they finished that.
Plans to do that, but there's nothing been done up there yet. So.
Well, they did the septic at the North Shore Lodge. It's finished.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, boy, they went after it hard.
They didn't redo any of the decks?
No.
Or the docks?
No, I was talking to him about that dock down there too. And I, I need to talk to the water, our, our water committee to see if they can use those funds for a dock out there or not. Is this, it's, it is a mess.
It's bad.
Yeah.
Larry, on the Camel Creek issue, I think we're gonna have to be real careful with the look of the agreement. The Forest Service has it's a bureau first because I'm not sure that they can do what you want to do.
Well, I, so, so most of those have a 10-year, after 10 years, all that goes away and they can do whatever they want. And we're at that right now. But yeah, absolutely. We gotta look at everything before we make any decisions like that.
And the other, the other issue that I wanted to throw in there is, is I know you've been talking to them, and we have over the years to build more of those kind of facilities on the lake. And I've never seen any plans or any-
No.
Any strive to do that. But it's a capacity issue and an overuse issue. And, and I'm kind of wary about taking that one over because I don't think the revenue is gonna be enough to really do a lot of work there. Same thing with Worm Lake.
Uh, there, there would be a, uh, to bring it up to where it needs to be, it'd take a few grants to do it.
Yeah.
And, um, I, I think it's worth studying before we we lose all that stuff. If the Forest Service chooses that they don't have the ability to do it, we need to look at it. And if we can't, we can't. There's just, I mean, we'll always look at it pragmatically and and move on from there.
Hey, what else you got?
That, that's enough for now. It's been busy. I'm telling you, I'm ready for day off.
Is this the month you guys do the slide at Cabarton?
Say it again.
New slide, is that starting?
We're ready to go. The money's available. They gotta drop, as soon as they drop the water, we'll have the new slide going in and the boat launch at the end done. And I get a lot of calls from outfitters about that boat. They're excited about that. I think that's gonna help a lot. Um-
And also, I know when we talked about doing rec deputies, to kind of go out there on Saturday mornings and take a look at some of the issues there. Um, my concern is that they're narrowing down that road with so much parked cars that we're gonna start having some injuries and some car wrecks there. And I thought maybe you might talk to the sheriff about, hey, could we go out and look at that some Saturday morning? Because it is a zoo.
I was down there Saturday morning and one of the sheriffs came down, uh, from the Cabarton side, turned their lights on and drove through and that was their, but you know, anything is awesome to be honest with you.
Do you have any, I know you're redoing docks and slide. Is there any plan to widen any of that?
Well, we're trying to deal with one of the landowners, but he's, he's a tough nut to crack, and I'm gonna tell you right now. But I will not give up.
Well, I think there's a lot of possibility on the upper side, I'm gonna say the east side of that road to expand and-
Boy, that east side, I, I look at that because we own quite a bit of property on that side. It's just all wetlands and it's-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even to the fence now, there's still room to-
I think we've-
Design parallel parking instead of-
This would be the 12th year that we've had exactly the same discussion about that. It is frustrating for me. I'll, I'll tell you that.
Mitigate the wetland, wetlands elsewhere. Mitigate the wetland, wetlands elsewhere.
Yeah, exactly. Maybe we could put it on that guy that we're struggling with down there, more of the wetlands on his property.
Maybe you can ask the new engineer to take a look at it.
That's a great idea.
If there's any way to mitigate that and just move wetlands somewhere else and...
Well, I'm doing a gravel pit right now that will eventually be, oh, I'm hoping in the wetlands, wetlands bank. But we've got a couple more years before that's going to be done.
That's a good point, yeah.
You know.
It's just, you know, we're getting more, like you say, more and more folks. We got to...
Oh, my gosh. I, I, I don't know where we put them all, to be honest with you. It is phenomenal. There is people camping on BOR property that I've never seen people on before.
I had a group of rafters come across my river bottom Saturday afternoon and it was hot and they were elderly and they couldn't make it to the bridge and so they picked everything up and drug it across over three fences to get to my house to get saved.
You know, I'm not so sure we couldn't, shouldn't put a sign at the south bridge about how really long that takes to get through there because every year we get some people in trouble. Because it's a long ways and if you get that wind starting to blow up the river, it's a big job. That could do it.
Maybe it's a two-hour flow and it's about a four-and-a-half hour flow.
Yeah, just general information, John Hicks is out of the hospital and home and is doing pretty good. I'm really excited. I talked to him this morning.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
You bet.
Thank you, Larry.
Next up, Mara.
Good morning. Hi. How are you guys?
Good.
So, been very busy. I did, helped out with the Idaho forestry tour on the twenty-seventh. And so, basically, that consists of IDL representatives, private forestry representatives, and then they asked myself as a wildfire mitigation to go present to private landowners. And basically, it tells, gives them education of how they can sustain their healthy forest. That was an all-day event. We did do a bunch of field tours, which consisted of a couple of firewise projects. And we got a lot of really good interest of homeowners to do more and then for them to start doing more community firewise projects, which, like I said, is the biggest thing that we're trying to do as a whole is reach multiple people instead of individual entities all the time. So, that was really helpful, super fun. And they do that every, every year, but it depends where it's at. So, it's every other year up here in McCall, next year it'll be down in Boise. And then they do the same things up in Coeur d'Alene area. So, it's through the IDL and it's with the private, private forestry specialist. And with that, what you were asking, Cindy, about the code enforcements through them. So, a lot of those, those code enforcements can be conducted through the IDL with the private forestry specialist. The thing is, is they have to have a compliance prior to doing any work, even on private ground. And that's how they get notified that there's work being done. And so, typically, if there's like a fish-bearing stream or certain roads, or if they're putting in a road, they pay attention to those things and go out there and meet with landowners. But if they do not have a compliance prior to that, the IDL will not know that there's any work being done on ground. So, enforcement can't truly happen. So, if us as a county are aware of people doing logging jobs or building roads or anything like that, we can notify the IDL and then they can contact those landowners and request them to get a compliance. So, it's just whether they are notified or not.
So, the next time we get calls on the Swiss Ferry issue, I'm just going to call you and let you...
Or Scott Corkle.
Or Scott Corkle.
So, Scott Corkle is the one that truly facilitates all of that. He oversees the whole office for the IDL up here. And then he'll send out a private forestry specialist out there. And so, a lot of people don't know that they're supposed to get compliances even when they build a house. You're supposed to get a compliance. So, if you're removing any timber off your property, you have to get a compliance notifying that you're taking timber either to the mill or using it privately. And that notifies that, it's called the PFS, Private Forestry Specialist, that they're doing some sort of work with timber and potentially next to roads and streams and stuff like that. So, they hold them compliant to that stuff.
So, I will give you a call hereafter.
Okay.
Because we have that issue happening in Swiss Ferry. Maybe you guys know about it? Maybe Scott does.
I, I don't know. I used to actually do the compliance side, so that's how I, that's how the process works. The other thing that I've been working a lot on is working with Idaho Power. And so, they've been, I know that they came in, did a presentation here, I believe. But they're starting to up their wildfire mitigation standards within Valley County. So, there's certain overhead power lines that they're going to be doing work every year or every three years. And so, they've been getting my recommendation of what they should be doing within county regulation, which some of the questions I have are for Jeff McFadden, so I'm going to meet with hopefully him a little bit later. But some of their questions are, is if they can take full trees, because obviously that'd be easiest. If it's underneath power lines, typically they just top off the, top of the trees or cut off one side of the tree, which leaves a tree standing, which some landowners are okay with. They'd rather have the tree than it being completely removed. But typically, if you're going to cut or top the tree off and it's more than a third of the tree, that tree's going to die in three years. And so, a lot of landowners don't know that. But Idaho Power can't just take that tree because technically it's on their property. Some of the questions they have is if it's within county, Valley County area, if it's within the right-of-way, can they take the whole tree? Because they will, but they just have to get permission from us legally. And whether we want to do that or not, or if they're going to just have to start, keep on contacting each individual landowner every time they go out there. So, one of the things I've been doing is getting hold of HOAs of areas that they're going to go and do fire mitigation and getting permission for that whole subdivision for them to be able to do fire mitigation within that ten, fifteen, twenty-foot spot. So, they can just go in there, chip it all instead of having to cut half a tree off. So, that's something that I've been working pretty closely with them on. And I've already actually gotten to Paylakes Cottage Site, which is down on Warren, Warren Wagon Road. So, all of those big homes and then little tiny homes. And so, that's a super dense timbered area and it would cost a lot for them to go in there and chip it. So, Idaho Power, if they get permission, they will chip that at no cost to the landowners. So, it's basically creating that fuel break underneath power lines. So, the more, the more that we get communities and HOAs and subdivisions on board with that, the less cost to that landowner.
And you could educate them on, you know, this thing's going to die anyhow if they're cutting that much down. We don't want a dead tree standing next to the road and end up...
Starting fire, right?
Not just the fire, they've fallen over on some kid or...
Yep.
Whatever.
And so, we actually did a full day assessment out there in Paylakes Cottage Site with representatives from IDL, so the private forestry specialist, SIPA, McCall Fire, and then the Idaho HOA representative to kind of discuss these things. And the consensus was to do large, and basically it's creating a fuel break, right? Granted, they have a lot more work to do out there, but I mean, it's a first step that is less cost to those, those homeowners. Now, they just have to maintain it.
Yeah, especially if Idaho Power will take that out.
Yes, and there's a lot of different things with Idaho Power. So, if it's a dead standing, they're legally not obligated, they're legally obligated to fall the tree and let it lie. But if it's live standing and they fall it, they'll chip the whole thing. So, there's, there's different things. So, it's better for the landowner and cheaper up, up front if the landowner lets Idaho Power take all that green material.
Makes sense. I'd like it. I would actually wish that Idaho Power would come in under their power line on my property and take it back because the trees are further back that are falling...
I will get with you.
Are hitting the power line. But the other thing that it does is it takes all the shade off the county road in the wintertime so the sun can hit it and it melts off. It's a benefit both ways.
So, that's...
I don't have the ability to do that work.
And Idaho Power does try to reach out to landowners, but it's really hard to get a hold of landowners in general, right? And when they have a timeframe, say, they usually try to reach out two or three weeks prior to this. If they don't get a hold of anyone, they just do the minimal that they have to do.
I would be in favor of them taking trees out of our right-of-way, but...
And so, that's a big discussion. Is it just within, is it in like city limits, city impact limits? Is it just in county? What does that truly entail? And so, that's, that's a bigger discussion that I think we...
It sounds like we need it as an action item and put on an agenda for discussion. So, give us half an hour so it's in how that comes.
Okay. I can see if Joel will come in.
Represent him from Idaho Power here too?
Yes. I would prefer that so that they can more plead their case of what they're expecting.
Sure.
And their standards, right? Because my mitigation standards are different than theirs. They've just been asking my opinion on all of them. So, and we'll see when they can meet with you guys. I'll reach out to a couple of them.
See if we can get together and get it on the agenda.
Okay, perfect. And then, yeah, I've been meeting with a lot of HOAs on the weekends because they're all up here on the weekends. So, been getting a lot of like full subdivision, doing five-to-ten-year plans for subdivisions here, which is phenomenal. We are having a huge influx of interest of fire mitigation and firewise plans, so, which is awesome.
Are they hearing it's because of what their insurance is doing to them?
I believe so.
Yeah.
That's one of the biggest things that I hear every time is insurance and if it's going to allow them to get insurances. One of the big things that they keep on asking for is a certification of an evaluation, which we don't do currently and we don't even do for the grants that I facilitate with IDL. So, that is a question I'm going to bring up to Idaho Department of Lands and the GNA is if we're going to start giving those certificates saying that they completed this fire mitigation and to this standard so that they can give out to insurance companies.
Because there are questions... We're really fine this morning and you've got two action items, so we probably should focus on your action items really quick.
Yeah, so my action items aren't until two.
And we've got them right now to sign hazardous fuel reduction to landowner grants?
Yes, I have those, but I forgot them in my office. I can just bring them at two.
We can move that, we can move that to two o'clock if you want.
Yeah, that's fine because those are quick.
You got to award the contract first, right?
Yep. I have them already.
This one is kind of on the agenda. Yes, we do.
And then at two, me and Stephanie both have bids that are opening. Okay, so, sorry about that. I forgot about those. My apologies.
The only other thing I wanted to add to your discussion about the homeowners is that I think it's really important in stealing them that there's a maintenance thing to this, that this is going to last you ten, twelve, maybe fifteen years and then you're going to have to do it again. And per code, we can't fund it then. So, they're going to have to know that this is an ongoing maintenance to deal with. That's the hardest part.
I think also the hardest part is when people sell that property, the new landowner still can't get a large grant. They can apply for these firewise, our Valley County Firewise Grants, right? But they can't get these large grants. And so, also that landowner informing the new landowner that they can't legally get a full parcel completed if they've already had work done. So...
We could record something so it would come up when a D transfer happens.
And that would be, Stephanie and John have talked about that.
Okay, so we're going to take a, are you all done? Thanks. We're going to take a five-minute and we'll be back here at ten till.
Mr. Chairman, we're live again.
Hey, welcome back, everybody. We're going to keep on going down our agenda. Scott, come on up. This is Buildings and Grounds.
Morning, Scott. Let's see. A lot of solid waste. Tomorrow, ten o'clock to noon, we'll do the first walkthrough with the engineering group up there Great West and get started on engineering part of the project. So, I'll be up here at ten. So, we're getting started with that. Top Warm Lake, they didn't get thrashed this year, Fourth of July. Last year, one of the campground or something just come dumped a bunch of stuff down there. But I just talked to Sharon, said it looks good out there. Some people brought furniture out there and they posted it out there, "Come get it or you're going to lose the site." So, she said most of the stuff's already gone. Cecil's blowing my phone up right now because people threw stuff all over the place out there. So, he's a little wound up out at Yellow Pine, but I haven't got a chance to get back with him yet. Sitting here, my phone's going off and going off and going off, so.
So, people are not respecting their site.
Yeah, you know, there's, they have, we've gone to, out there, only being open certain days a week, but they're so close to the road and the gates aren't that, they're trying to get the gates redone. It's easy. But he sent me pictures. It looks like they've opened up the doors there and there's just black bags all over the ground and stuff. Things out there, so. But, so, I don't know, may look at having improved their gates and stuff for them out there, but they are fairly close to the road, you know, out there. Other than that, things have gone, we're looking at, most, one of the holiday weekends, but August thirty-first, we're, you know, going to do the household hazardous waste collection again. We'll see how it turns out this year, you know, maybe something we'll start looking doing every other year. It's about fifty grand every year we do it, so.
You've just been doing it once a year?
Toby's got, worked on the arena, got the pumpkin shoots up and I was there last week. They had to do a plot plan to finish our application for our permit. I got a call into Darryl this morning to see kind of where we're at so we can get going on that. But he, getting the arena put up and stuff. getting the arena put up and stuff, um, and then I talked with Darryl, probably as far as the building, get something that the announcer can stand in or use this year or at that point and then complete it after the rodeo. And Darryl said he could kinda give us like a temporary option to see as long as the structure is, you know, sufficient and safe, so.
Yeah, it's at the fair, uh, it's in the fair. So I walked over there and looked at all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, bucket and shoes, all that looked good.
Yeah, that stuff, so yeah. Come on on that, um, around the courthouse, we, you know, had the meeting, looking, the second or third week of August, they're gonna remove the whole front sidewalk at one time and then come back and pour it all at once, so I'm gonna work with the sheriff's department and stuff, like an alternative entrance at that time, possibly a corner over here. And then I did talk with Brad from, uh, Granite last week, wanted to look what the cost of asphalt was as far as what the cost is and he was gonna talk with Josh and see what we could, uh, what kinda schedule we can get to redo this back here. And I did talk to him about repairing the work from Tri-State over here when they did the lights.
And they're gonna dig this pavement up, right?
Yeah.
And then re-level, get the drainage right and then.
Yeah, so we discussed part of it is this drain is right out here by the road, it seems to be higher than our parking lot, so possibly lowering it enough to, so it's more functional, that's about there.
So, can we work with these people when they tear out this front to kinda redo all that around our stamps too?
Yeah, but I had a, when Josh was down there and asked to talk with Brad about doing our apron, have the contractor that's doing the sidewalk just do that apron at the same time, so we're not trying to go back across the new, you know, sidewalk with equipment and bust that up and tear up our, the new sidewalk they put in. Good stuff. And I forgot, I need to get with Melissa, cause they've got those stands out there that they have the statues and stuff on, they're gonna have to get those removed or something, um, I don't know who put those in, if the city put those in for, for the, uh, ULI or what they did.
It was Cultural Arts did. They do a lot of different things there, but doesn't mean they gotta be taken out and moved down the street.
Cause they'll have to make arrangements, get them moved before they come in and start tearing things up.
We could cut the trees off and just make that the stand.
They are, those trees are going away and.
We're not happy about that. Just wanna put it on record.
Yeah, I'm happy, cause then I don't have to worry about roots busting sidewalks again. Trees are the worst things to have along a sidewalk there are. And, um,
You're one.
By the time the roots bust the sidewalk, I won't be around anymore anyway.
That's right.
Doesn't matter, so.
Not busting our sidewalk, they'll be busting the city's.
You still get the.
Have you been watching the, so on the stairs out there, we, we go to lunch that way?
Mm-hmm.
Man, it just looks like that whole thing is sloughing off and it looks like there's a big void underneath there. You looked at that at all?
It looked like you could look down through the crack, it's like, I wanna help deep that.
Yeah, yeah.
A river running underneath there.
And it looks like it's sloughing more, so I don't know if that's, you know, is building sinking? I mean, Annette just let us know this morning, the drawers on her desk are still opening. We need to try and put some kind of a leveling underneath her desk so their doors aren't opening all the time.
Damn.
But, um, so I just feel like that whole thing's still sinking.
Yeah.
And evidence is that front step, but.
Uh, I don't know how we measure that or what we do, you know, or someone, you know, come in and shoot grade on it and
We just need to get out of there.
Establish point and then come back and measure it again or something, but.
We just need to get out of there.
Yeah, tear it all down.
Yeah, we do. Those people don't think that way here, so.
From the other side of that door.
They're starting to. They're starting to.
Yeah. Um, I did, uh, uh, I sent an email to Robert, the gentleman, uh, has the alternative solid waste to so we'll see, uh, you know, what, what they have to offer.
Can you explain that to me? I was, I was reading a little bit of that.
I don't know what it is, I just, you know, got the email. I, I was contacted a year or so ago about an alternative up there. Method of dealings, but it required a lot of equipment and stuff to initial startup, the thing basically, we're almost like composting everything or something was what their program, but I don't they were out of Colorado or somebody, the people that contacted me.
Gentleman's in the valley now. I met with him last week and I just, I don't wanna engage in the conversation, so I word off to you guys that are working on this, but they are in other areas right now, they're composting 95% of all of the trash.
Mm-hmm.
And they haul it off and it's actually less than what Lake Shore would charge us to do to haul it.
But my question is, cause I understand that, I, I follow what you're saying. This household trash coming in, but when you have people dropping off, you know, furniture and couches and beds and.
They do it all. It's a huge grinder.
Yeah, and you know, what they're doing with that, you know, construction waste and stuff that we're no longer putting on the hill, but the interesting thing, you know, if we have the space to put up, you know, you know, to install the equipment and stuff to do with.
Mm-hmm. Anyway, it's worth a conversation.
It's worth looking at.
They're working with.
It is, you know.
They're working with Lewiston right now on that new regional site. We'd want Lewiston to be a part of it. So if Lewiston has another,
Mm-hmm.
you know, solution, we need to know that before we invest heavily in this, so. Technology is changing.
Up at Clay Peak this morning, they're, they haven't changed the rate yet. They didn't change their rates for residential stuff dumping there. But right now, we pay $20 a ton up there and their proposal to their commissioners is to raise that to $25 a ton. Is what they're proposing for dumping over there.
We're gonna know that before budget.
And how much?
Depends on how quickly they move over there. I don't know, you know, um, but that's what they're proposing as a ton, for ton.
Everything's going.
Five dollars a ton. How many tons a month?
I, I can't, I just got the, I just got the last quarterly report last week from Terry and stuff, so, um, but, uh, that's what they're proposing is to raise it five dollars a ton, the tipping fees.
I think we're doing around a little over a thousand ton a month on average.
Well, no, we did more than that. I can.
We did what, 13,000?
2,308 tons last month.
Hmm. It's going up, probably gonna be 16, 17,000.
Yeah. And, yeah, cause I, I was just looking at the claim, cause I just paid Clay Peak and by the time I subtracted tires and other stuff out, I think it was 2,308 or something is what it was.
That much per month.
This month.
Uh, I had a phone call from a gentleman that does remediation for asbestos and Clay Peak has closed all of their stuff, I believe, to asbestos.
Yeah.
You, are you familiar with that at all?
Uh-uh, I haven't really, we had a request what to do with it here a month or so ago, um, uh, someone just, it was inquiring and they've, um, but, um.
And some of the remediation companies up here are struggling because there's no place to take it. I think the closest one right now is Twin Falls.
Yeah.
And so they're trying to figure out how we can negotiate on that. I don't, I didn't know if he knew anything, so.
No, cause I, I was referred to Ada County and they're, you know, just, yeah, anything that's county, what counties are getting to now is they're only gonna take what's in their county, but, you know, with the growth across the state, you know.
We've gotta find solutions.
Like Adams County's not taking any of ours this year at all, for some reason.
They quit doing that, huh?
Yeah, we haven't, yeah, we haven't, since they closed it down to end of last year, cause they went over their allotted, they have not opened back up to haul over there.
Hmm.
So.
I found Clay Peak the other day.
What?
Made a wrong turn off the highway.
Yeah.
Had to go all the way around, I come back, come out at Weezer, oh, there's Clay Peak.
Yeah. So, I'm trying to think if there's anything else off the top of my head. That's kind of where we're at right now.
Sounds like you're on top of it.
That's what I do.
So, are we gonna, you gonna get something on agenda for that alternative deal for us to look at or?
Well, I just wanted to meet and see, yeah, I, like I said, I just reached out to have a meeting with them to see just what they're proposing.
Mm-hmm.
And stuff, see if we can get some type of document or, you know, some type of presentation or just what they're doing and stuff.
Do you want Neil to be in that initial meeting?
He can be, you know, I, I'd say this is despite, just reached out to him, you know, to see, you know, on the earliest convenience to we can set up a meeting and discuss what their alternative solutions are.
I think it'd be good to have him, you know, give a meeting to us or at least a presentation.
Yeah.
To the board.
Yeah, and see what they, what, just what they have.
Alternative back, you know.
They're dealing now on, on military bases. I mean, they, this is a huge movement in, in a new way of processing for solid waste.
Do they mark up the stuff they compost or they haul it off or what do they do?
That's what I was asking.
They just haul it off, but they grind it all on site and then they, there is some kind of a process that they use that they don't smoke, they burn it basically in some way, but there's no smoke, there's no
Mm-hmm.
emissions. I mean, it's, it's friendly to the environment, so it was a really interesting conversation, but.
So there's nothing to haul off?
Mm-hmm.
Know what you're saying?
Basically. I mean, there's a, they have a new piece of equipment that
Yeah.
Equipment's like $3 million, but they do it. It's their equipment. They just come and process it on site. And it costs you less than what it does to haul it off somewhere else, so. It's gonna change solid waste into the future.
I bet. Yeah, I'd love to hear something about that.
Still waiting to hear from Lake Shore on, you know, hauling the C and D and what do you stuff over to, um, Midvale or what is. I know it'd probably cost us to have, um, Timber Creek come up and grind existing what we have, even down at, at, uh, Lake Fork, about 200,000 this year.
These guys are very familiar with Timber Creek.
Really?
Wow. That'd be some kind of a competitor that's starting at work.
But, um, so I don't know what the projected cost is yet to not grind it there and haul it like Lake Shore proposed or still. Mark's saying, still trying to get the guy tied down to make sure that, you know, we get halfway through the season, he doesn't shut us down or something. But, um, you know, we're probably looking, if we have Timber Creek come and grind what we have now, you know, including the Lake Fork pile, about 200,000 or so.
That's everything, even down at the, out the Lake Fork site?
Yeah.
That too.
And that's with a buyback of about 37,000 they give us for the product, so.
We've got it in the solid waste budget, correct?
We can do it, mm-hmm. But we gotta, we kinda gotta go with what Lake Shore says they manage it, you know, I mean, we gotta see what their cost, what they're proposing to haul, you know, haul it over there, cause I think the the gentleman, they were throwing out $750 is what they're gonna charge us to accept it over there on top of what they charge us per ton to haul it over there. Have to see, see how the numbers play out.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on down. Next, uh, one up is Groenbridge, Jeff.
Good morning.
Morning.
Forget out of that chair slope.
Ah, don't like this hot weather.
Me either.
My body's rejecting it immensely this year. Um, I can do pretty quick here. I just talked to Mara, Mara, Mara. Um, I sign a deal with Idaho Power every year to take down trees underneath the power line. Don't clip them off, get them out. So they're, they've been doing that and they've been taking most of the heat from the landowners, but we, we're still getting quite a few phone calls and it's just I don't know, you take three foot out of that tree, dominant limb takes over, three years later, you cut that limb off, take the whole thing out. And Idaho Powers up against the battle that we're always against when we go cut trees out of the right of ways.
Sure.
That's their dust protector, that's their noise, that's their, it's like, if you want trees and brush, plant them on your own property.
Yep, provide your own screening.
Y'all know how that, how that goes. Um, we're starting paving today, this week, we're kinda got a new paving crew, Russ is working on training some new guys, so we're working on some little patch jobs here and there, Norwood, Moon Ridge. Uh, one in Carefree Pioneer, I think, the cul-de-sac, little things, then we'll start I believe in Wagon Wheel later this week, start doing Lake Trail Cascade, Wildwood, move to Hill House, then move to West Valley, Wisdom.
Is that two weeks worth of work? Is that a month worth of work?
It's about two weeks with our small crew. Yeah. Yep, might go a little faster the closer we get to the plant, the trucks aren't having to haul as far, but yep, we'll get it knocked out.
Are we trying to get water out anywhere in the meantime?
Watered all weekend in Hill House and Wagon Wheel, once a day.
Maybe Wisdom.
I don't know if that was on their list or not, but they're supposed to be keeping all this pulverized stuff wet, just once a day. I mean, that's all we're doing. Had a guy that, we, well, two guys did it over the weekend, just went out once in the morning and that was it, hit it heavy and about all we can do. Um, we started the backcountry blading last week, week and a half ago on Lake Creek. By the end of this week, they should be getting close to Yellow Pine, somewhere in that vicinity, and they'll just continue from there and head into Big Creek and and then when we get around to it, we'll start on this end down here. Um, soon as Dan gets back from his vacation, the paving we had done with the contractor, um, didn't give us any of our test results. Supposed to be tested as they pave before traffic gets on it. We found one core sample out of all the roads they did for us. It's supposed to be sampled before you put traffic on it. Supposed to have loose sample testing results to us. Didn't get any of that this year.
They already done it.
So Dan's gonna be right in the middle of it when he gets back.
Oh, my goodness.
They don't follow the rules and don't get another job.
It's in the contract, so.
Hold them accountable, Jeff.
Yeah. Um, in Lake Creek, replacement, we're we didn't, I'm working on the 404, hopefully I have it done. Dan will probably review it when he gets back, rented the new covert last Monday, about $18,000.
Be able to retrieve that other one?
Right now, no. The helicopter that is in Riggins is only capable of lifting 4,000 pounds. This is covert eight.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I wanna talk to the Forest Service, cause they got the big Chinook sitting in McCall right now. They've got on contract for fighting fire.
Yeah.
They longline logs in their off-season, so I know that could pick up that covert.
Oh, yeah.
Whether or not they will cut it loose, go get the covert. I don't know. Forest Service asked me last week what I'm gonna do with the covert that's in the creek and I said I'm gonna leave it there. Yeah, but responded back, so. Unless they let me cut a road down into it, which they're not gonna let me do, it's just, it's gonna be part of nature.
I'll just tell them to work with you and help me get this thing moved. You guys got the helicopter?
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna, it, it looked like it was pretty jammed in there with all the other stuff. It's gonna create a.
It's not bad. It's, it should, it's already logged, yeah. Water's gonna run through it and it's far enough away from the roads and everything else, it's not gonna cause an issue.
Not this year, anyway.
Not this year, but it's far enough away from the roads where it'll never affect our roads, we're eating Forest Service road. Well, I don't know. I'm hoping for suggestions.
Yeah, talk to them.
Well, it would make more sense to spend 18 grand on retrieving that old covert than it would be to buy a new one. Because it's not gonna cost 18 grand, but I don't know what those big helicopters charge.
Uh, I'm figuring it would have been between six and eight to retrieve that. That's from Carlson's probably. They didn't give me a price once I told them to wait. They're big, big helicopters over on some logging job, I think, over in Washington, so they, they just got their little I don't even know what it, it's capable of lifting 4,000, ideally 3,500.
It's an old, it's an old Blackhawk, I think.
Is that what it is? Okay. But they're big, they're big, big birds over in other states somewhere working. That's still going. Um, we finished covering all the Rockin High Valley last week, early on in the week. Those people should be a little happier for a while. Um, other than that, that's about it.
What about the gentleman that couldn't get his equipment out, so he was gonna end up brushing?
So he, I just talked to him this morning, we're gonna split the cost, brush from the Gold Fork Hot Springs up to the logging site. It's gonna cost, cost me 3,600 and cost him 3,600. So that's a pretty small price in my book to get it done.
Good, that's good. Great job.
He calls, he calls me a couple times a day and just tells me what's going on and where we're at on this end and.
So because that's gonna open up that road, what shape is that road in on the way back? I mean.
Not that bad a shape. It's got a. It's not that bad a shape. It's got a couple of little washes in it. It's, we bladed it three or four years ago. It's not, it's not one we do every year. It's an as needed type deal. It's just like any of our other backcountry roads. Next Wednesday, I'm meeting Idaho Transportation Department. Uh, our bridge inspector and, I don't know, it sounds like a whole gaggle of people on the Xena Creek Bridge. One that we hand placed riprap under last year to make sure it didn't wash away. Now it's on the critical inspection list, so they're gonna have a big meeting and look at it.
Where's this?
Xena Creek Ranch.
Xena, okay.
Yeah, back on Lick Creek.
Yeah.
Um, and then the day after that, I'm going to go up to Stibnite and meet the FEMA and IOEM. Fisheries and nymphs and everybody else.
ATD's in town Wednesday. They wanted to meet me at 11:30 out at their, at, um, Feline.
I don't know who that is.
That's the way they pronounce their name. You might call it Sheline.
I'll, I'll, I'll make call Sheri and ask her how she pronounces her name.
Uh, I don't know if you wanted to meet with them or not.
What day?
It's Wednesday at 11:30.
Can you send me a little email on that?
And then we're meeting at three with Fred Gibson.
Who, what?
We're meeting at three.
Okay.
On, at Westwood on Fred Gibson.
Think I've got that one on my calendar.
Whatever it's called. Well, I mean, ATD, and then they actually have their community meeting coming up on, I don't exactly what their community meeting's on. Or what the topic is, but they've got a big community meeting at four o'clock on the 17th.
It's on Rainbow Bridge.
That's right. We're gonna hammer them hard also on our plan for this whole area. Talk about Wednesday also, but.
Unless you know, we had two major wrecks on between Lake Fork and McCall in the last week.
Gonna ask the sheriff for some things back there.
And the one at Mile High was probably somebody not paying attention. The one at Lake Fork was probably somebody not paying attention and.
Going too fast and trying to get across the road and whack, yeah.
They didn't hit the car. They hit the trailer. So that tells me that they probably seen the vehicle going and didn't realize it was pulling a 24-foot trailer behind it and kept up their speed.
Yeah, sure messed up the front of that little car.
Oh, I'm sure it did. And whose fault is that gonna be? Who knows? Other than that, unless you got questions for me?
Good.
Okay, we got, I think, three development agreements to sign. I'm just gonna hang out here because I think those are coming up here.
She's next.
Right behind you.
She's waiting for me. Get out.
How long's Dan on vacation, Jeff? How long's Dan on vacation?
He'll be back on the 22nd.
He's gone two weeks now.
Yeah, our next agenda item is development agreements with three different developers. These are all action items. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Cindy.
Okay, we'll do Moser first because Karen is here.
Triple M Refrigeration Moser subdivision.
Yes. This was a subdivision, it's a one lot subdivision that created an illegal, that was fixed. An illegal split that occurred 20 plus years ago. And as part of their subdivision, they received approval for their Triple M Refrigeration business. So part of that was that they, they do a development agreement because we started putting that condition on everything. And after discussions with Jeff, the road superintendent. We decided that the easement for the bridge, which is easement 278416, which kind of goes into their property for quite some, quite a ways for the bridge that was placed there and the right of way, it's already been granted as adequate mitigation for the one lot.
So they're deeding more right of way or just saying?
They're not, we already have the right of way that we need.
You're just legalizing what was done years ago.
We're legalizing an illegal split. That's the only reason they had to do the subdivision plat. Otherwise, it just would have, it would have just been a conditional use permit.
Okay, so when you're exhibit, you say conditions of the development, but there's nothing written, written there. Are you gonna put something in that spot?
If you go to the last page, that's the conditions, that's the attachment, Exhibit A.
Oh.
And it talks about compliance with plans, all the infrastructure.
Sorry.
Facing amendment, traffic mitigation.
And not all of those, um, you've removed all of the conditions down below? I, I didn't know why we were taking all of that off development agreement, but is that just because it's part of the facts and findings?
Are you talking about the conditions of approval of the CUP? I haven't been including those in the development agreement. Unless there's something that we need to assure. There's, there's some things that we want to put in the development agreement, but we don't want to just reiterate the conditions of approval of the CUP.
I guess I didn't read far enough to make sure that it references the CUP requirements of some way.
So as I know, to make sure I got this straight in my head, you have an easement for the bridge, but then you have right of way on both sides or their side of the bridge, is it?
On their side of the road.
Is deeded right of way?
Is deeded right of way along Norwood and West Roseberry, plus an easement that goes into the property for the bridge.
Okay.
On the first page, it states, this is CUP 2347 Moser subdivision.
Hey, so.
And then also with this one. She's waiting on her occupancy permit. They're, they're done. They can't get their occupancy permit till the plat's recorded. We needed this and then we also need to get it on your agenda, so it's, everything's in place. I need to get it.
Okay.
I mean, it's scheduled. Would you mind making a motion that she can receive her occupancy permit now? And then we'll bring the.
This is the last thing that needs to be signed on the final plat?
Yes.
Okay.
They've got the building constructed. They've, I mean, they were able to construct that.
Are you two in agreement with that?
Hmm, yeah, I'm good with it.
I don't have a problem with this one.
So we need a motion then to approve the development agreement and allow the resident to occupy the the building?
Do you just make that as a motion?
I can make that as a motion. I'll second it. A motion is second to approve the development agreement and allow the occupancy of the facility. We got a motion second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Because then the building department can finish what they're doing. Um, we're gonna need a notary, please.
Oh, yeah. Good catch.
The second one.
Okay.
Is CUP 2309 Frost Management Storage. If you had previously approved this and said it was fine if they gave us the right of way. They don't want to give us the right of way because it costs too much to create the deed, because they have to hire a surveyor that might show up sometime this year to create the deed. So what they would really like to do is on the last page. And, um, it says pursuant to the recommendation of the Valley County Road Director, in order to mitigate the impacts on nearby public roads, the developer agrees to do in-kind services valuing $8,104 with his paver and crew to overlay that dollar amount on Farm to Market Road, south of Roseberry Townsite. Uh, the exact location will be determined by a site visit between Jeff McFadden and Jonathan Frost. Final occupancy of the structure will not occur until the services are performed.
I drove that the other day. To me, it doesn't feel like we have a bunch of issues right now. Is it?
Is this a two inch or three inch overlay? What are you looking?
Two inch.
How, how long with that much money?
How far they can go with $8,000.
Yeah.
Not very far with pavement.
That's from Lake Fork to Roseberry.
It could even be the driveway entrance.
But it's, that's why we're gonna meet. Because we might identify this spot here that's 300 feet long, spot here that's 100 feet long. Instead of, like you said, one section from Roseberry South, about 600 feet, it's not bad. Then starts getting bad.
Off the Barker.
Where's?
Oh, and we always.
Where's that site at? I was down at the Roseberry carnival this weekend.
Just north of the creek.
Just north of the creek's where it's at.
The creek and Roseberry.
Okay.
Have a long, narrow.
Gonna put in a storage unit thing there.
It's just their storage facility for their.
Hold their own stuff. Cindy, you have in this one, 6,104. Did you say it was 8,000?
Should be 6,000.
6,000, yeah, right.
Did I misread it? I'm sorry.
6104.
6104 is what's in this.
Yes, 61, sorry. I have to get these spectacles.
You got an extra 2,000 out of a pool.
Hey, you know, show up.
I, I'm, I'm kinda hesitant on this one. I mean, the whole goal of Farm to Market is to acquire the deeds on that.
We have the prescriptive easement 25, and if we ever get to the point where we can widen it, we can eminent domain 10 feet.
Which no one ever likes to do an eminent domain. I mean, right now, we have the opportunity. I don't understand. No, I mean, their survey is not going to cost them 6,100 bucks.
Yeah, they just, it, it's the trying to get a surveyor within the next year.
And it, it'll cost quite a bit. They'd rather see the work done.
So you're just gonna patch up some of the busting up roads, what they're proposing to do.
So I guess I'm looking at the long-term impacts. You know, I mean, you pave something and it's gone in 10 years. And if we, if we get a right of, or if we get a deed, you know, that's in perpetuity. And so I, you know, if you take the, the names off right now and the situation right now, what is the law? The best thing for the county in the long term?
What's the easement now, 50? And so we need another 20 feet. Is there anything we could put into this contract that says that if we get to that point, we get the other 20 feet or the other 10 feet on their side?
We could do that.
I didn't write anything in there, but it's up to what.
Cause I'm kind of agreeing with Sheri here of the, I would rather have the deeded right of way than the fresh pavement. What do you guys want to do?
Well, like that can, that helps us down the road because Farm to Market is really busy.
That whole road needs to be ground and crabbed and redone from there.
It's not just that. It's a major collector. It needs, it's not gonna be 70 foot right of way. It's gonna be 100 foot right of way. 50 years from now.
50 years from now, yeah.
We need to get that in the books.
If we get it in the books, we just add to our wired right of way.
Are we requiring 100 feet? How many yet?
It's not, it's not a.
I think right now our policy says 70 foot. I don't know how you could ask for 100.
We can run West Mountain because it's identified as such.
How wide is Rose, or Farm to Market right now?
50.
50.
Just 50?
25 centerline.
I would be more in favor of writing in development agreement where it would allow them their building permit to get started on the building while, while we are you know, waiting for the, for the, uh, surveyor to go out and do the work. I just, I really feel like this is a short term, yeah, we'll just take this and, and not do the other, but this road needs improvements. Farm to Market needs 70 foot right of way anyway. And the more that we give up these opportunities to be able to acquire that through development, the more it's going to cost future commissioners in order to do this work. And so I would be in favor of doing something with them to allow them to move forward on a building. Maybe even hold occupancy on the building or something like that, but allow them construction time. They're not here to have that conversation with, so I think we just have to table this and tell.
Well, or just deny it, not agree with it and go back and.
Go back to the original one.
Original intent, yeah.
You already approved one.
Which one?
Which was the.
Additional right of way.
I, I think we just go back to them and say, yeah, we want right of way. We want, we want to discuss something else, then, you know, come in and we can discuss it. But I think it's important that we not give up these opportunities as we move forward to get what's the best for Valley County in the long run.
So let's make a motion to deny this development agreement with Frost and send it back.
I would move that we deny the development agreement with property, or Frost Property Management and send it back for revision.
Oh, wait, we already have one approved, so just.
So just deny this one and then.
Deny this one.
So Doug, I will amend my motion to deny the development agreement with Frost Property Management and revert to the initial agreement. Want to relay that to him?
You got a second on that? I got a motion is second on the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. The last one is Moon View.
Moon View Ranch, Phase Two. This is nine single-family residential lots. It's along Moon Ridge Drive.
Not along Moon Ridge.
I'm sorry.
Off of the subdivision, it's already there. In addition.
It's the public road that accesses it.
Phase one came off.
Right, this is internal inside, but it accesses from Moon Ridge.
It's the valvey?
Yeah.
So our development agreement with them is what then? It's all internal private roads? And Phase Two now is coming off of Norwood?
No, Moon Ranch into his existing development, adding nine additional lots, because this is Phase Two. So what we're trying to do is mitigate nine additional single-family residential lots. And the agreement on this one was gravel shoulders will be replaced with new gravel road mix from Mission Street to Big Moose Road. This agreement's a one-time improvement that will be completed no later than December 15th of 2024.
Need any pavement or any overlay on that road?
No, it's, I mean, the same shape everything else is.
Again, we're trying to.
Shoulder, we're gonna get 20 years, at least 20 years worth of pavement out of it.
So what's the value of that shouldering job, Cindy?
This was a negotiation with the road superintendent.
Jeff, would you know?
I can't remember what it was. We talked about this about a year ago. That's, otherwise was pretty close to what he was gonna have to pay us.
How much road are we talking about shouldering?
From Mission to the entrance into this is probably a mile and a half.
Oh, big chunk.
We have 18 inches of shoulder sites, food material that's 18 bucks a ton, this is equipment.
I think that sounds reasonable to me. You're talking three miles of shouldering, that's a lot of expense.
Right now, there's hardly anything there to even look to maintain a shoulder.
So they'll haul in this material?
Pretty compactable, three quarter.
Will be, where's the nearest source for that?
Uh, they'll probably end up, I don't know, you can hear it from.
Sunflower?
Ranitz Pit, Nichols Pit, Wilson's Pit. Yeah, there's, there's plenty of sources for them to get it from.
It's such a narrow road going in there too. If it has better gravel shoulders, maybe that would help some.
It would help.
Okay, which pleasure?
That's what our road superintendent's saying that he needs in that area. And I would move that we approve the development agreement with Moon View Ranch, Phase Two. Are more phases on this?
What's the name of the road, Jeff? Is it Moon Ridge?
Moon Ridge.
It's Moon Ridge. Trying myself to know.
You okay with that?
Yeah. Here we go. A motion, did I get a second?
Second.
Motion is second on the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So soon as you want to bring those up, Gabby, come on up. What's that?
Go ahead, and we're not doing the investment policy until this afternoon, correct?
The CIP.
Start down at this end.
So while we're doing that, we're going to move on and get into our budget workshop. This is not an action item from the CIP Committee. This is for future purchases of equipment and articles of importance.
Articles of importance.
I can think of lots of them.
It's all far too pieces and nuts and bolts.
Good job on the presentation. A little bit of work on this one.
What do we got here? This is Valley County.
Wait for Doug to get back or do you want me to go ahead and get started? Go ahead.
I didn't see him leave. No, you can go ahead and get started.
All right, um, so I am representing the Capital Improvements Committee. Uh, there are several of us that spend a few hours each year working through these projects. Um, the committee consists of Commissioner Mopin, Jeff McFadden from the Road Department, Scott Klingon from Buildings and Ground, Jeremy from IT, Jeff McFadden, Road Department, myself, and Stan Baugh from the Sheriff's Office. And Stan Baugh's out of town, so Sheriff is here himself. Um, I did ask everybody to come, uh, just in case you have questions that I'm unable to answer myself. Um, but we'll go through some slides here to explain, first of all, the process of what we do in the CIP Committee. This last year was the first time we met year-round rather than just in the spring. We, um, we do start the process in the spring when budget preparation begins. Um, we send out notification to all the department heads at the county and let them know that if they have any, uh, capital improvement requests, which is any purchase of, um, vehicles, equipment, uh, building improvements, renovations, whatnot, that are in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. They would need to turn in a capital, uh, improvement project request that details what the project is. Um, then we, as a committee, meet and we review each of these applications. And we go through and we ask questions and we try to anticipate the questions that would be asked in this forum and get those answered. Um, and then we present to the commissioners in this meeting. Then throughout the rest of the year, in September, once the projects have been approved, we begin to plan for the initiation of those projects. So we meet, we ensure that the money has been budgeted in the correct places, and then we talk about timeline for implementation of these projects. Uh, then we meet again in January to get a status update on the completion of the projects, and then the process starts all over again in April, so, yes.
You bring up CIP projects from the previous budget that weren't done, or they added to the list or they dropped?
We review and, um, we don't give them new numbers, but we keep track of them, so I'll go into detail in that here in a little bit. Um, before I do that, I just wanted to kind of take a step back because we did have a little bit of questioning and concern about why we have this committee this year. And I think it's great. I think that we need to stop and take a look at why we do things every once in a while. And, um, part of the questioning was why do we sit down and spend all this time scoring, especially when, you know, department heads don't necessarily have relevant information on why another department head wants to make a large purchase? Why are we scoring these? Why are we spending all of this time when everything is funded each year? And so, you know, we kind of went back and we talked about like the process of department heads or elected officials being able to make large purchases without really vetting them or justifying them to other people could potentially cause purchasing to get a little bit out of control. So we determined that it is a good idea to have the CIP Committee, even though it's not necessarily relevant for somebody from IT to determine whether or not the sheriff needs new patrol vehicles. Do you see what I'm saying? So there's a little bit of questioning of what the relevancy of that is. But, um, it is important, we think, that if we are making large purchases as a county, that it is justified in that we believe that we needed enough that we're willing to fill out an application and present it in front of a committee and then the commissioner, so.
And we have a transparency part.
Yes, yep, absolutely. It helps promote transparency.
Not only that, but we had PIL funding that had been saved for a long time for projects. That is, PIL funding is gone. I mean, we're, we're at our minimum on PIL funding. And so we're not going to be able to approve things moving forward. We have to prioritize what's most important this year to create the opportunities for better service, transparency, accountability.
Yep, absolutely. So this year, we only had, um, I believe that there's seven projects. Yeah, I believe seven or eight maybe. Um, and all of them were within the budget parameters. And so we chose as a committee this year not to score the projects because there was enough money and in the proposed budget to be able to include all of them. Um, and we're essentially letting you know that we, as a committee, agreed that all of these are viable projects to move forward. If in a future year, there is more requests than there are budget money for, we do still have the scoring matrix to be able to use to go through and determine which projects are viable and which ones are not, so.
So all of these budgets, all of these seven have been approved in the budget?
Have been included in department budgets, yeah.
Oh.
And there's only one.
They may or may not stay there because we still haven't approved pay increases.
Right, I think that, go ahead.
Commissioner Mopin, you're absolutely correct. These are just proposals and have, the commissioners have already seen within the existing fiscal year twenty twenty-five budgets. These have not been approved. This is our recommendations to this board. If the board chooses not to move forward with these, absolutely, that is your discretion.
Well, and honestly, my feeling from twelve years ago to now is that what I really appreciate is that the committee's done all the work that we used to get bombarded throughout the year. I need this, I need that, and pretty soon you kind of lose that continuity. And I really appreciate the fact it's, to me, it's like an inventory list of future wants or needs.
Yep, absolutely.
And as Sherri says, if we have the money, great. If we don't, then we prioritize we think where that should, where that money should go.
Yeah, and I think that the committee would prefer if we get to the point where the budget's not going to be fully funded and we need to make cuts, at that point in time, we would meet, we would score the projects, and then we would move forward.
Good.
Um, all right, so to give you a little bit of a recap from last year, all of the projects you see listed up on the board were completed at some point um, between the start of the fiscal year, October first, and now. Um, and then we also have a list of the projects from the previous two years. There's one back there from twenty twenty-three that are still in progress. And, um, you can see the furthest column to the right over there is a timeline for estimated completion of those projects. So when Clerk Miller is creating the budget, he's taken into consideration that these projects are still outstanding, and this is when we estimate that these expenses will come through.
A question, maybe it's more for Jeff. Can you buy pickup trucks, you know, three-quarter ton heavier? Are you buying them all diesel? Why are we not buying them diesel?
It's an extra ten thousand dollars.
To follow along with Neil's question, too, um, are we back to using our local sources? They have trucks available. Are they clear out of the process?
Right now for the patrol vehicles. Option list to what we want, which is supposed to be given at the price.
Well, and that's great. I guess what I'm asking is they're back in in eligibility to supply those vehicles, okay?
And then it's going to be up to you guys to decide if you want to spend a little bit more staying local or Dodge. Nothing on its own.
Another reason I was asking is, you know, diesel will get twice the fuel mileage that a gas will.
We're finding out you have a three hundred and sixty thousand mile Dodge down there. Flat four around it.
Oh, yeah. You can get three hundred miles out of a diesel. It's worked hard.
Yeah, and we're not towing heavy stuff. Just our hundred and ten gallon fuel tanks we have in the pit. For a half ton.
Oh, yeah.
So the other question, Johanna, on the upgrade of the mobile radio system, is this the nine-one-one stuff we've been working on? I mean, the dispatch stuff, the radios work. Everybody in the county has the same radios?
No, this is, uh, it's partial. So, yeah, go ahead. It is, um, this project was presented back in twenty twenty-three, and we were essentially at an emergency status of the Road Department radios not being able to function because the equipment was out old and we weren't able to purchase parts or repair what we had. So this has been mostly completed. There are still our expenditures coming out of that. I'm not exactly sure on the dollar amount that, that still needs to come out of that.
That is my question because when we have the discussions with the company, and I can't think of the company that's been helping us with this. It was closer to a million dollars, but that cost was going to be split amongst McCall City EMS Fire Cascade, and we weren't paying the whole bill, but that was kind of the estimate.
Correct. That is a, a separate project. They're related, um, but it is separate. So we have not created a CIP for that yet because there's still, uh, it's too far away for us to put a specific dollar amount for the county on that project because, like you said, it will be a cooperative project between all of the agencies that use the radio systems within our county.
Jeremy's trying to find radios for, um, the Road Department that could potentially incorporate into that new system. No guarantees. But he's trying to use the same vendor to see if there is something that we could go ahead and purchase theirs in advance. But there is no guarantee, but he is trying to make it coordinate, so. We'll spend a bunch of money upfront on these and can't use them as we want.
Right, and that has been part of the delay in this project, which is a smart delay. We want to make sure that we're not throwing money at a problem that's then going to be irrelevant two years down the road. So
honestly, the new satellite phones that Larry's been made aware of, they're coming from Elon Musk. I mean, that would be a perfect solution, you know, especially for our backcountry guys, so. And they're, they're very inexpensive.
Well, I think it's important, and Jeff, you correctly were wrong, but they need cell phones, but they also need radios to be able to talk from a dump truck to a blade operator to say back up or dump here, you know, we need two forms of communication there.
Yeah, one, one radio, that's what we got now. We got one, one radio, two frequencies. Got a car to car. You hear the dump truck. We got channel one that hits a repeater.
And they're working okay now?
Yeah, we're just, they're old and outdated and
I don't think other other sheriffs, EMS, McCall police, everybody's in the same boat. So we're trying to figure out, let's do it county-wide and see if we can't get a break.
We do have another meeting with Catcall.
That was what I was trying to remember. Is that an online, Kelly? Is that, are they coming here? Is that an online? And then are we getting together over there or is it online meeting? That's this. I have them at nine o'clock. Okay. I'm going to come in for that one. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
You're, you're fine. Any other questions about the in-progress? CIPs? It's, you know, a little bit, we just have to remember, we're still in fiscal year twenty-four, so the fact that some of these aren't completed yet, they weren't planned to be completed until this summer anyway, so we will have an update for you next year if any of them are remaining open. All right, so now we're going to go through in detail each of these requests. Um, pictures are for illustration purposes only. They're not exact replicas, so please, I hope that I got them close to the correct correct one. Yes.
He's got the wrong hand.
All right, so, uh, Road Department's request number one is for some CAT fusion blanks. Uh, there's three of them requested to be purchased here at a cost of ten thousand dollars each for a total thirty thousand dollars. This purchase is planned to be within the Road and Bridge Department. Essentially, this just allows for quicker and easier attachment of the snow blades to and from um, the equipment at the Road Department.
These are the blades in the front, right, Jeff?
So all of our loaders now have that coupler.
Oh, these are school loaders.
Yeah, so we have a snow bucket, we have two sets of forks. Right now, we can't use the snow bucket, we can't use RV plows, we can't use certain things because they don't fit these new fusion covers. These will be the blanks that we will weld onto the implant. So that picture right there. Few of our loaders, they grab whatever they need.
Oh, that's a good idea. Okay?
All right. Request number two from the Road Department is to purchase two new F-two-fifty pickups to replace existing high-mileage aging vehicles. Um, both of these would be three-quarter ton pickups. Um, and they're sixty thousand dollars each. The other thing to note with any of the vehicle purchases that we're talking about that would replace aging existing vehicles is that there is, um, a little bit of resale value on the old vehicles that they're purchasing. We estimate that each of the vehicles that will be retired should bring in about six thousand dollars revenue once they're auctioned off.
I guess my question is do they have to be forged or are you just going to put them out as a three?
Nothing against Ram, but three-quarter ton Rams have coil springs in the back. Stuff in the back.
In the back?
Yeah.
Really? Never heard of that one. Oh, my goodness.
Do they have, do these sports have the airbags?
They have leaves springs.
They all leave springs?
Yeah, you're right enough. We don't have to know what it's. It's three-quarter ton.
We're going to get us a list of the number of vehicles that you have and the mileage on them, so we have something, just like the Sheriff's Department does.
All that down there.
Shoot that to us. Is this something where you think that every year you're going to be buying a pickup truck or two, or are you about upgraded? We feel like we've been buying quite a few vehicles.
So here in the next year of the Sheriff's Office. When it goes out, it can be for, this is probably going to be something.
Maybe just get on one a year so that we have something that we can budget for, but.
I have to look at it a little closer. You might be kind of able to see about this Sheriff's Office. Two a year. Four hundred thousand miles on four hundred thousand miles. Not easy. You get more on a lot faster.
Okay?
All right. Uh, next is a motor pool request. This is for a new three-quarter ton pickup from Buildings and Ground. Um, the current Buildings and Ground pickup has got unusable storage compartments and it's high mileage. Um, so they're looking to replace it with a pickup with a service bed, pipe rack, and lift gate. Purchase price would be around eighty thousand dollars. They believe the resale for the current vehicle is about eight thousand dollars. This will come out of the motor pool fund.
I wouldn't Buildings and Grounds do it. At a motor pool, nobody else that used this vehicle, correct? Oh, you do, for all of the divisions, even though it's assigned to them, correct?
So Jeff, can you get aluminum truck beds instead of the steel ones? As far as the truck boxes and stuff?
Our two newest ones are two years old now. All hinges are latches are in term. You don't, we see a You don't, we see a paint. The ones that's probably the ones we've got right now. These are basically pulled off because we have to push the door. Latches don't work.
So if you got a trailer to haul like your kids steer around to, if you have access to one? See what those guys? And actually, eighty thousand is not a bad price for a truck like that. Not with the truck bed on it.
It itself's about ten thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah. Do they still make single cab trucks like that?
Also, the picture's just representative. It may or may not be a single cab.
Okay?
All right. Uh, next is another motor pool request. This is to purchase a second vehicle for the court services and probation department that's located up in McCall. Um, currently, there's five employees that work in that department, and they all share one vehicle. Um, they would use the second vehicle for court appointments, community meetings, home and field visits. Um, I asked DeeDee to be here in case you had additional questions on this. Purchase price is estimated to be about forty thousand dollars. Um, this would be similar to one of, like, the, uh, vehicles that we use to check out, to take to conferences, or to have different departments use. And again, this would come out of the motor pool fund.
This will actually be stored in McCall, so people don't have to come down here to pick up something.
Correct.
Before, when there was two up there, um, but they were not being used. The one that was not being used, and there was constant issues with it going dead. So you guys are using the vehicles and need a second one, correct?
You're using that vehicle. And, um, you're also using that one. Your expectation is to be able to, um, some information's going to be, um, to change a lot. It's a special project as well. They should, we should sell a few information.
These both have a logo on the side for the county? They can be identified as county vehicles, probation? Will they be?
DeeDee, aren't you also getting reimbursed for your personal mileage? There's going to be some savings there, too, as well.
Further discussion maybe, but...
Books and... I think that's what the new director asked. You don't want to put probation on the side of it, because everybody's going to run when you pull in, so it makes sense.
But she's got the, the uniform, though.
Now, when you get out, everybody's going to run.
I mean, it doesn't have to say probation on it, but you should have.
The other... The other thing is that, and this is always a concern to me, and I don't know how people deal with it, but if you're out at work and driving around, county needs to be on everyone's personal insurance, that we're an additional insured. And I would take bets, nobody's really ever checked that. Doug, is that a correct statement?
It's not a correct statement. I don't think it's a correct statement.
Okay. Okay, we'll talk about that, too.
Forty thousand, the high side.
Yeah.
She's driving now.
Got to have warm seats.
You want a heater, too? Okay, what's next? We're running out of time.
All right, the next request is, uh, for sheriff's vehicles, and I'm going to give a little bit further in-depth explanation on this one. So we ran into a problem. Uh, ever since two thousand and twenty, we all know that the supply chain, especially for vehicles, has been really difficult. So what happens is, you know, we only run our sheriff's vehicles up to a certain mileage cap, and then they need to be turned over and new vehicles purchased. Well, once we hit that cap, we go out and look for vehicles. But since the supply has been so low, we'll place an order for a vehicle, and it can take anywhere from six to eighteen months to be delivered. So, um, what the companies have been doing is they've been creating these order windows, and those windows pop up at random times, and they are open for a week, and then they close. And so the sheriff's office has struggled with being able to purchase vehicles to fill our supply, because by the time that window open and close, open and closes, they don't have the ability to come in and do a CIP request, because we're outside of the budget cycle. So this request is specifically left open-ended. They're requesting three vehicles this year, so that if that window ever opens up in two thousand and twenty-five, which some years it doesn't, um, they have the ability to fill the need for replacing vehicles if necessary. So this current year's request is, uh, three vehicles, total purchase price of a hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, we divvied up the cost, so that the vehicle itself is forty-five thousand each. Um, two of those are coming out of motor pool, and then one of them is coming out of the capital equipment fund. And then the upfitting of the sheriff vehicles, which costs about twenty thousand dollars, is all coming out of the sheriff's department budget.
For a total of a hundred and ninety thousand.
Correct.
Okay?
Sheriff, will you update your Excel spreadsheet with the number of vehicles you have and the mileage? Sambo's got one that he usually sends me every year. If you could get an update on that.
Excuse me. Okay, next.
All right. Um, also, related to the sheriff's office there, Jeremy has budgeted in his IT department a civil software application that would replace the current computer arts version that we're using. Um, as you are well aware, we are moving away from computer arts. We're nervous about losing functionality of the civil software management over there. Um, they use that software to, uh, track payments, garnishments, concealed weapon permits, sex offender registry, and whatnot.
Excuse me?
The price of a hundred thousand is really a ballpark figure. Initially, when this request came in, it was set at two hundred thousand. Um, Jeremy's gone out and done a little bit more research, and he's finding them for cheaper. So we still haven't identified the exact solution that will be used in this instance, but we estimate that the price will be closer to the hundred thousand dollar mark.
My understanding, just in researching this, is that you probably have two more years that computer, computer arts will support this. So this year, it's not critically, but there is not enough funding to do it.
I will, um, mention that software implementation takes quite a bit of time. And moving from one system to another can take six months to a year to successfully execute. So getting started on it early would be advisable if we have a, a hard deadline of when computer arts will no longer be functioning.
Somebody tell me what CWP means.
Concealed weapon permits.
Okay, thank you. Okay?
All right. Next is the sheriff's office safety wall. So, um, Buildings and Ground is looking to remodel the portion of the administrative offices over at the sheriff's office to include bulletproof walls and glass.
So that, we're looking at the new front entrance right there?
That is a picture off of Google.
Okay, it's not. Go wow.
But it looks pretty fancy. I think we could use it.
So that's all, that's all the windows around the side of the building, too? That was my question, what does that do for driver's licenses? They're going to get it, too?
Basically, yeah, you're, uh, oil shape in there.
Yeah, people can come in here and shoot us anytime they want.
We have security over here.
I mean, from that window. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Are you going to need an architect on this at all, or just you think you've got it? So forty thousand might be realistic?
Is that the last one?
Nope.
One more?
Uh, yes, one more. All right. Um, parking lot asphalt replacement. This was a CIP request several years ago. Uh, didn't end up happening, so we re-upped the request this year. Um, we believe the price is around eighty thousand. I think that there's been some additional, uh, work since then. So Scott, you can update me if the price is different than that. Um, this is the one and only project to be funded out of Pilt in, in the request.
I think that's great. It'd be great to have it get done. Um, one of the things, and that's it, right?
That's it.
One of the things that you brought up earlier, that I know we talked about a little bit in the past, is that lease McCall City, we haven't really looked at that lease now in, what, seven years? And I'm wondering if it's time to go in and revalue what we rent that facility for? Because I think office rent has gone up. I don't know, I'm just throwing out the idea. Something tripped my little brain.
All right, the last slide I provided, prepared for you just shows, uh, the cost of each of these. There are eight CIP requests, so the cost of each of them laid out in a graph, so you can see and then where the funding is expected to come from for each of those.
Did you do a, a synopsis or a calculation on how much that is total?
Um, I do have that in my computer. Total's seven hundred eighty-five thousand. Oh, it's only six hundred eighty-five thousand, because I need to reduce the cost of the civil software. Six hundred eighty-five thousand.
And that's for what?
For all of these projects.
Thank you. Thanks for all the hard work.
Yeah, great job.
I had to miss a couple of meetings this year, so it was...
Good job.
Right.
Amazing enough, the parts and pieces cost. Okay, so that being, we have some more stuff in the morning agenda, but I'm assuming we're going to move that till after lunch?
Kelly's over here for the Idaho Public Safety Communication Grant, Kelly.
Kelly?
I hope we can maybe just approve that.
So Kelly, why don't you come on, and we'll look at that real quick? This is an action item. This is the AdCom grant?
No, this is the IPSCC grant, the Idaho Public Safety Communications Grant that we apply for every year. So this is going to be updating, um... The only major purchase on this is two things. One is a laptop that is done to our new phone system through the connection with the other three counties. So if we had to leave dispatch, we could grab this laptop and dispatch remotely as long as we had a network connection somewhere. So that would be there. All the other centers have them. And then the other thing would be really, um, the KVM switches, which connects all three of the computers that dispatch functions on into one keyboard, one mouse, so you don't have three on our desks. Um, and all of it's paid for a hundred percent by the grants. It, um, is the code red maintenance, our EMD software maintenance, and soft, uh, software maintenance on one other program that we use.
So there's no match or nothing? It's just straight grant?
Most of it's straight grant, but the maintenance, it decreases ten percent each year. So it's a ten-year process, which is kind of nice. It weans us off. But as soon as we end up, like our West Tech marketing, our Stancel recording equipment that records everything that dispatch does, every single time with this IPSCC grant, when you upgrade or refresh software, that grant cycle starts over again. So it's a pretty, pretty nice grant. This one's only for thirty-some-odd thousand dollars.
Three, three thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and four cents.
On the cover sheet, it says thirty-six thousand, four sixty-six. Cover sheet, wrong.
I think it's the third page of the grant is the total amount.
It's four of eleven.
Thirty-six thousand. Pretty sure it's thirty-six thousand. I only brought the signature page. I didn't bring the whole grant with me.
Make a motion that we accept the, uh...
We got to find the right figure.
Safety Communication Grant.
We'll find the right amount first, so we can include that. I think the other, I think the cover sheet is a convoluted of a couple different expenses.
Let me look again. One...
That shows thirty-six, four sixty-six.
Where did the other three thousand come from?
Wish I had access to my drive, I would be able to tell you.
Want to come look at mine?
It, it's on, on the grant application.
IS, IPSCC grant? Is that what this is?
This is what we got.
Thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and four cents.
There's the figure.
Yeah, thirty-three, four sixty-six.
Thirty-three thousand, four sixty-six and four cents.
Kelly, look at the cover sheet. Why did we?
Cover sheet says thirty-six. Right? Here.
Oh, okay.
So it's for thirty-three, four sixty-six. Oh, four. Okay, now you can make your motion again, Neil, I'm sorry.
So is it actually thirty-three and not thirty-six? Full amount of equipment, annual maintenance and service fees requested is thirty-three, four sixty-six.
It's thirty-three, four sixty-six.
I'm going to motion that we accept the Idaho Public Safety Communication Commission grant for a total of thirty-three, four hundred and sixty-six, four cents.
A second.
A second, all favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries.
And these funds are procured and sent out the first of November. We've never been denied this grant in the single ten years that we've been...
Of those.
Help me just to do a, on the meeting minutes.
Get it done.
Yeah, I'll do it. So the next agenda before lunch is the meeting minutes of July first. Everybody get a chest lead out.
Yep.
Good, and I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of July first.
Second. Move the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And we are going to recess for lunch, and we'll.